You can help analyze the images after the eclipse.
Eclipse soundscapes. People have different reactions to viewing eclipses, and animals do too. If you're in the path of totality and you'll be surrounded by animals, NASA wants you to listen for and record those soundscapes. Will the birds stop singing? Will crickets start chirping? Eclipse soundscapes will revisit an eclipse study from almost 100 years ago that showed that animals and insects are affected by solar eclipses.
NASA is looking for people like you to collaborate with them. Citizen scientists have helped make thousands of important scientific discoveries. Be sure to visit NASA's eclipses and citizen science website to learn more.
An impending eclipse will be across the entire country.
The eclipse will land in Mexico and cross the entire United States, leaving millions in wonder and awe.
Are you close to the path of totality?
How much of the eclipse will you be able to see?
How long will totality last where you are?
When does it start? Because you don't want to miss it.
Where will you be?
We wanted to use shadows to tell the story about the eclipse, which is all about a huge shadow.
If you would like to make your own shadow puppet stories, here's how you can try this at home.
Shadows are really interesting. On the International Space Station, the temperature can change 400 degrees between light and shadow. Shadows are how we experience eclipses, and they can be a lot of fun to play with.
We're going to make a shadow puppet theater. You will need a few simple supplies. Cardboard box, thin cardboard like a cereal box or cardstock, tracing paper, an X-acto knife, scissors, a hole punch, brads, tape, a template for your puppets, or you can draw your own, long skinny sticks, and a light source.
Decide what kind of puppet you want to make. We've decided to make a dog. Using the cereal box, we're going to draw our design and cut out the puppet pieces.
Next, tape sticks to the back of your puppet. To put the puppet together, punch holes and put brads where the joints are. This will allow the puppets to move.
To make your puppet theater, measure the size of your tracing paper and cut a hole in the cardboard box that can be covered by paper. Ask an adult for help if you need to. Our tracing paper is 11 by 14 inches, and we've decided to cut an 8 by 10 inch hole.
Next, tape your tracing paper over the hole in your cardboard box.
Place a light source behind your puppet theater. You can use a flashlight, desk light, or even a bright window.
Put your puppet between the light source and the tracing paper.
To make your shadow puppet come alive, put your puppet close to the tracing paper, then pull it away to see how the shadows change. Use the sticks to make it move.
Once your theater and puppets are created, you can experiment with different designs. Try telling a story with your puppets and look at how the light and shadows interact.
Some folks write poetry, some sing songs, and others make art.
Alma Thomas was often inspired by the space program, and in 1970, she may have witnessed a total solar eclipse. Later, she produced Eclipse as one of her space paintings. The Eclipse is from her series Space Paintings, which includes at least 15 works covering topics from rocket launches to sunsets. Thomas found her source of inspiration in daily life, and although we cannot confirm that Thomas saw it, a total solar eclipse was visible in the United States on March 7, 1970. Thomas's bright colors and bold circular patterns give a dynamic tone appropriate for the fleeting drama of a total solar eclipse and the emanating light of the solar corona.
Whether you paint, draw, or take pictures, here are some ways that you can make your own eclipse art. Beyond the awe and wonder of an eclipse, do you know what it is?
A great excuse to wear awesome glasses.
Not only that, but it's also a lot of fun.
Here are a few fun ways to view the eclipse. This is the second total solar eclipse to pass across the United States in the last seven years.
In 2017, a total solar eclipse crossed the country, and I got a chance to be in the path of totality. For that eclipse, one of my producers and an astronomy educator from the museum went to Kansas City, Missouri. The school where I used to teach was smack dab in the middle of totality. I got a chance to host the show from there with friends and colleagues. I had seen eclipses before, but not from totality. Before totality, we battled a storm, literally holding down tents. Just before the eclipse started, the clouds went away, and we were able to see the beginning of the eclipse. As the moon slowly covered the sun, it began to get darker and darker. We watched with our glasses, looked at projections of the eclipse, and waited for the big moment. When totality started, someone shouted that you could take off your glasses, and we saw Bailey's beads where the hills and valleys of the moon allow some light to get through just at the moment of totality. One of my friends took this picture of me during totality. When I saw it the first time, I was surprised at how dark it was when the sun was completely covered. I was completely taken off guard by how emotional the experience would be. It was amazing, and words just left me. I say all of this to encourage you that if you have an opportunity to go to totality, you should go. If you're at 99% and can drive a few miles to make it into the path of totality, do it. Experiencing totality is something that you will never forget, and until you get a chance to experience it, nothing else compares. Beth, back to you.
Thanks, Marty. If you're a teacher in the United States, chances are in the coming weeks you'll be discussing the eclipse, and we've got you covered. Our Teacher Tips document helps connect the eclipse to national learning standards, includes links to a bunch of great classroom activities, and more additional resources. Getting ready for the eclipse is important, but what about after the eclipse? How do you process with your students what they experienced? What is the historical context? What did it mean to them, and was their experience different from the person standing next to them? Be sure to check out our full post-eclipse discussion guide.
The countdown is on. The eclipse is heading your way.
We hope this episode has helped you prepare for the eclipse.
And we hope that you have a great view of the eclipse and get to experience it safely, no matter where you are.
If you liked this episode, be sure to follow Stem and 30 on Facebook and Twitter and subscribe to the National Air and Space Museum's YouTube channel.
Clear skies.
Ticks, they're out en masse, so check yourself, your kids, and your pets anytime you've been outdoors. Check everywhere, in your hair, under your arms, and between your toes. If you find a tick, remove it as soon as you can. Use fine-tipped tweezers to grasp the tick close to the skin. Use firm, even pressure, pulling straight up without twisting or turning. Then clean the bite area and your hands with soap and water. Some tick bites can make you sick, so if you start to feel ill or notice a rash near the bite, call your doctor.
Yep, I can hear you guys.
About a minute, Vinnie. Well, I lied. It's 7 o'clock. Are you guys all set?
We're good.
All right, stand by. In five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome to the August 12, 2024, meeting of the Long Meadows Select Board. This is Select Board Chair, Vinnie T. Martin. I'm confirming that all members and persons that anticipate on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Zerko?
Here.
Andrew Lamb?
Here.
Mark Gold?
Here.
Josh Levine?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons?
Here.
Mike Barbieri?
Here.
This open meeting of the Long Meadows Select Board is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the Agenda and Town's website, identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the Agenda posted on longmeadowma.gov. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted Agenda unless I note otherwise. The meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please raise your hand when we get to the comments section of the meeting, and I will call on you to approach the microphone. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar format, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will approach you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand, *6 to mute, unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If anyone in attendance is recording this meeting, please announce yourself now. All right, we will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. So we will begin with Select Board announcements. School Committee vacancy. The town of Long Meadow is seeking one interested resident to fill a vacancy on the school committee for a term to expire at the June 2025 annual town election. Interested candidates should send letters of interest and a resume to selectboard@longmeadow.org and schoolcommittee@longmeadow.k12.ma.us by Monday, September 9. Interviews will be held at a joint meeting of the school committee and select board on Monday, September 16, 2024, with appointments to follow on September 24. For additional information on the role of the school committee, please visit longmeadow.k12.ma.us/schoolcommittee. Housing Authority vacancy. The housing authority has a vacant position for a term to expire at the June 2025 annual town election. Interested residents are encouraged to send letters of interest and a resume to selectboard@longmeadow.org by Wednesday, August 28. Interviews will be held at a joint meeting of the Housing Authority and Select Board on Tuesday, September 3, with appointments to follow on Monday, September 16. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civillearns. Former DPW demolition improvements project. The town of Long Meadow is holding a public information meeting on the former DPW facility demolition improvements project, which involves the demolition of onsite buildings and structures, removal of various onsite materials, improvements to the southern portion of the main DPW building, and the capping of former burn dump area. The meeting will be held on Thursday, August 22 at 6:00 p.m. The Adult Center Multipurpose Room, 211 Maple Road. The Long Meadow Department of Public Works and the Town's Engineering Consultant will address planned improvements and project schedule. The public is invited to attend, provide feedback, and ask questions. For additional information, please visit longmeadowma.gov/civillearns. Fall Special Town Meeting. The Fall Special Town Meeting is set for Tuesday, November 12 at 7:00 p.m. The Long Meadow High School Gymnasium. Citizen petition articles are due in the Select Board's office no later than noon on Friday, September 27. In order for a petition to be guaranteed placement on the Special Town Meeting warrant, 100 names, signatures, addresses of registered town voters are required and must be certified by the town clerk. You can find forms, instructions, and additional information at longmeadowma.gov/townmeeting. The Treasurer Collector's Office will be closed from Tuesday, August 13 through Thursday, August 15 for an annual training, and the town municipal offices will be closed on Monday, September 2 for Labor Day. All right, so with announcements completed, we are now moving over to resident comments. Do we have any resident comments tonight?
We have one in the audience.
Okay.
Thank you. Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive. I am speaking concerning my email in the Correspondence section of the Agenda. I ask for your indulgence for an extra minute as these issues are important. I asked the Select Board to review these two issues this evening for the citizens, as Mrs. Heineman, with a reminder, will be going to press. Improper storage of pool chemicals during the night of July 11th and possibly longer, 23 5-gallon containers of pool chemicals were improperly stored with no lighting at the Bliss Park Pool. Pictures are attached as number 1 and 2. These chemicals were 10 yards from where children were burned by pool chemicals last year. I have provided you OSHA and CDC guidelines, among other references. It is undeniable the chemicals were stored improperly. It is undeniable the chemicals were hazardous. Calcium hypochloride is an oxidizer. Pulse Arboquetts are calcium hypochloride. Cyanuric acid was also there. These chemicals can cause burns, eye and lung irritations, and damage, and commit toxic fumes, and are a fire risk. Young children, due to body mass, are especially susceptible to injury. Town responses from the Select Board Chair and Town Manager were excuses after my force-cordial email. The responses were: lack of storage, an active work zone, which makes the situation worse, something about sunscreen, and a very callous remark that implied the oxidizers were not as harmful as the myriatic acid that caused the burns last year. There are no allowable exceptions or excuses for the improper storage of pool chemicals. I find the Select Board Chair and Town Manager comments to be reprehensible, tone-deaf, and insensitive to the children burned last year. I've been encouraged by the Select Board Chair to file a claim with the DEP, which I am contemplating. I asked the Select Board to get answers to my original questions. The citizens, parents, and children who use Bliss Pool and Park deserve that, and frankly, an apology. DPW issues. The town does not have a properly functioning DPW. Its vacancy rate is over 40%. Citizens want no more excuses. We've heard them for years. Scope, plan, deadlines, and accountability are needed. The problems at the DPW have resulted in public safety issues, substantially higher costs, work being delayed, not done, or shoddy work. As an example, the town has run out of steel plates and is in short supply of orange barrels for road issues and collapsed storm drains. Overdue repair work will not begin until the town's de facto DPW finishes assembling the three playgrounds.
All right, we've got about 10 seconds left, Tom, so rock up.
Yeah, rock up. The current... maybe... I asked the Select Board to become involved and take charge here. Whatever has been going on for four and a half years or two and a half years is not working, and now I am told we're going to mediation with the union. People are tired of excuses.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Vinnie. Could you use that Q and A?
Resident Tom, it's live.
No, I'm going to check on the Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
I do not see anyone.
Okay, great. So let's move on to board and committee appointments. We've got a bunch of appointments from interviews conducted during our July 15 meeting. I'll entertain motions for these appointments.
I'll do this, since we're remote, we've got to take a voice vote, I'll do this in one motion. I'll make a motion that we make the following committee appointments: That we appoint David Martin Marinelli to a three-year term expiring June 30, 2027, for the Community Preservation Commission. That we appoint Dr. Robert Byefsky and Dr. Richard Steingart to the Board of Health. Dr. Byefsky for a three-year term expiring June 30, 2027, and Dr. Steingart for a one-year associate's term expiring June 30, 2025. That we appoint Andrea Schultz and Theo Kastenosis... Kastenosis, yes, excuse me, to three-year terms expiring June 30, 2027, to the Cultural Council. That we appoint Michela Salazar and Edward De Gezo to three-year terms on the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Advisory Committee, expiring June 30, 2027. That we appoint Greg Link to a three-year term expiring June 30, 2027, to the Energy and Sustainability Committee. We also appoint Greg Link to a three-year term expiring June 30, 2027, to the Recycling Commission. And that we appoint David Lavenberg and Jerry Plum to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Lavenberg for a five-year term expiring June 30, 2029, and Mr. Plum for a three-year associate term, non-voting term, expiring June 30, 2027.
Second.
Great. Any further discussion? All right, Mike?
All right, Mr. Hemophy.
Yes.
Mr. Zerko?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
All right, great. Next, we have the Board of Registars appointment. We recently appointed two folks to the Board of Registars, and now we need to appoint a third. We have a memo here. The Democratic Town Committee has offered an individual to be nominated, as well as the Republican Town Committee, and I will, you know, open it up now for any discussion or motions about making this appointment. This is an appointment to fill a term that ends on... or, yeah, fill a term that ends on March 31, 2027. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, Vinnie, just for people to understand, what we've been doing as a matter of policy is alternating two from one party, one from the other, and then flipping, flopping it. And so I believe it's appropriate for me to make a motion to appoint Peter Benton to the vacancy expiring March 30, 2027.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we're second, so any further discussion on this?
Uh, Vinnie?
Yep, go ahead.
So regarding the policy, where is there a policy? Is this a Select Board policy, or is...? Because I was looking at the state's website, and I don't believe that there's a policy at the state level from what I could see in terms of, you know, moving back and forth from two to one and, you know, one to two.
And if I said policy, I apologize. It's been our practice, not our policy. We've been doing it for 30 years, as far as I know, but certainly 15 that I'm aware of. So it's not... there is no policy, you're correct. But in terms of equity in the town, given the split, we've just been flip-flopping back and forth, and it seems to have worked.
Yeah, so I just have a... I just have a couple of concerns because with the amount of people voting, which is a good thing, and with the amount of changes that have happened as well on this committee, I think Aaron Freed has done an excellent job. And personally, I would... I think during this time with a lot of the changes going on, especially with some of the appointments we've made here, that it would make sense to keep Aaron Freed on the committee. Furthermore, you know, I did a lot of research on, like I do with every candidate that's in front of us for appointments, and I was really troubled, excuse me, I was really troubled, to be honest with you, with some of the things that I saw Mr. Benton posting online. And we've already removed a member from a committee due to... I'm not going to go into why, but for actions and words that were hurtful and really hateful. So I'd like to actually read some of these comments from Mr. Benton that he's posted on Facebook. Kamala Harris, father is Jamaican, mother from India, truly African-American? That's a question that he's posing. This is someone that's supposed to be serving our community on a very important committee in town. Interesting how... this is February 4, 2023. Interesting how two black quarterbacks in Super Bowl is being hyped. One is half-white. I think these comments are reprehensible, and anyone who's putting their name forward for an appointment, we take this seriously, and I find these words to be insulting to members of our community. And I think Mr. Benton should pull his name from being considered, and I do not feel comfortable voting for him. The last one I want to read is a so-called meme that says, "Straight pride. It's natural, it's worked for thousands of years, and you can make babies." This was on June 4, 2023. So I would... the last one I would... will read is Democrats Are Communists memes, June 7, 2023. It has an individual throwing up a rainbow cloud. It has an individual throwing up a rainbow cloud. And it's very difficult for me to even read this right now, and I hope the Board withdraws the motion and reconsiders because we have an opportunity to do what's right. And oh, by the way, when I was doing more research, Ms. Freed happens to have a woman who is black. And it's very difficult for me to read these messages in a community like Long Meadow, which should be more accepting. And thank you for your time.
All right, anyone have anything further to add? Any other thoughts?
And I wish Mr. Benton was here to... I had questions for him. I wish he was here to answer them.
I don't have a question. I guess my concern is clearly the comments that Mr. Shorco read are potentially concerning. My concern is that Long Meadow has historically been a nonpartisan community. It's nonpartisan when we run through the Select Board. It's nonpartisan when we do try to get things done. I think to change this longstanding practice has more issues, particularly given the fact of what the responsibilities, or I should say, minimal responsibilities of the Board of Registars actually is. I still believe that this adjusting back and forth is more appropriate for this town.
Vaneece?
Yeah, go ahead, Josh.
Mark, I agree with you that we should be... We are nonpartisan. I'm fine with switching this back and forth, but if I can't vote for this, I can't vote for Mr. Benton. I know Mr. Benton... I'd stay off politics, or I stay off Facebook, so I don't like to generally dig in too deep on people's politics because sometimes you learn things you didn't know or you didn't want to know. So while in theory, I would support switching back, back and forth on the party, I can't vote for Mr. Benton. If the Republican Committee wanted to put up someone else, I would consider it, but we don't have that in front of us.
We certainly could defer this and tell the Republican Committee, if they want somebody on it, to put up a different candidate. I mean, that's within our purview of doing.
Yeah, I mean, the motion could be withdrawn, and then we could go back to the Republican Town Committee, who feels strongly, and like Mike Marcus talked about it, continuing its practice of switching which party has the majority of Board of Registars.
I mean, my concern is that we turn the town of Long Meadow into the same issues we're getting nationally. And I think it's very productive and advantageous for the town to continue to be nonpartisan. And if there's an issue with an individual, then we don't appoint that individual. But I think to keep this the way we have is far more important to the long-term structures and benefits for the town. You know, if there's agreement to go back to the Republican Town Committee... Now, if they say it's him or nobody, then I guess we know where we're going to go. But I'm more than willing to withdraw the motion if indeed there's a consensus that we'll go back to the Republican Committee and ask for an alternate individual to be nominated.
How long would the committee have, do we know? Because we have a prime... The primaries are coming up.
I believe there's two active people on there right now, so they can still be...
Okay, I would be in support of going back to the Republican Town Committee and asking them to provide a new name.
And I would encourage the Republican Committee to put forth someone who would make the residents of Long Meadow trust that the right decisions are going to be made and not have to worry about anything. And Mark's right, there are a lot of awful national politics. We need to keep that at a long... I thank Dan for bringing that to our attention. And that's unfortunate. So I would support going back, and I hope we can have somebody that would... We can put our trust in.
What's up? So right now, there's still a motion on the floor. If it's not going to be withdrawn, then we can...
Is there a consensus? We'll go back to the Republican Committee?
Yeah.
Is there?
Yeah. This isn't... Like I said, this is not about...
Fine, with that consensus, I'll draw a motion.
It's about racism versus politics.
Okay, thank you. Mark went through the motion. Mike, if you could, you know, go back to the Republican Town Committee and ask them to provide a new name, then we'll vote on this appointment at our next meeting.
Yep. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right.
You have six minutes.
Okay, so... So next up, we've got Select Board comments. We've got public hearings starting at seven-thirty, so we'll see who gets through Select Board comments here. I will start off. I've just got one quick one. On Saturday, the Long Meadow Historical Society is hosting History on the Go at the Storrs House Museum. A bunch of towns in the area are all doing it at the same time that they're opening up historic sites in their town and offering tours. I went to it last year. It was a great event. I actually volunteered during it last year. It was a great event. So we encourage folks to check it out. It's from twelve to five on Saturday. All right, anyone else with a comment? Josh?
On Thursday, the Middle School Building Committee is holding in a butters meeting. Butters to the proposed site at Williams on the shortlist have been invited, and there will be a lot of information available at that time. I believe only... I'm not sure how it works, if only butters are invited. But we then have another meeting on August twenty-seventh and where there will be further discussion of the proposed site and potentially another meeting after that, depending on how things go at that meeting, in order to make the submission for September sixth. So people who are interested should keep an eye on the Middle School Building Committee website, and I would encourage folks to tune in to the upcoming meetings. There's a lot of big decisions being made.
Great, thank Josh. Anyone else? Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, just two quick comments. One is that the Board should just understand that the process for rebidding and renewing our... or issuing our contract for trash hauling has begun. There's a whole group of people from the D P W and others that are helping do that. The contract expires at the end of this fiscal year, but as we indicated previously, we needed to get... Thought we needed to get started earlier. So the process is ongoing, and there's nothing to report at this time in terms of progress other than the Select Board gets to make the final approval of the successful bidder. It is and will be the largest contract that the town offers for outside services. So it's important that we pay attention.
How much is it, generally? How much was it last time?
Without... Okay, that's a better one. Without giving up the bid. Last time, it was, you know, it started as a five-year contract. It started at like seven hundred thousand a year and went up till like nine hundred thousand or something like that over the course of five years. And it's, you know, weekly pickup and hauling of trash and recycling at everybody's house. So it's pretty big size.
Okay, thanks.
Maybe it'll be less this year.
That's how things have gone.
Mark, do you have something else?
No, that's it, sorry. That'll be it, that's good.
Okay, great, thank you. So we'll move on to the Town Manager's report.
Thank you, and I will be quick because I know you have a poll petition. Goal-setting and strategic planning. To assist the Select Board and Town Manager in our goal-setting and strategic planning work, I've secured a facilitator. I'm going to be sending dates to the Select Board for a meeting in September or early October to get a working meeting scheduled. The facilitator will then send a questionnaire to each Board Member in advance of our session to understand the issues, concerns, and goals of the Board. The fall twenty-twenty-four road resurfacing work has been awarded to Warner Brothers LLC in the amount of seven hundred and two thousand, five eighty-five and fifty cents. The work is expected to begin soon with a substantial completion date of October thirty-first. Roads to be resurfaced include Farmington Avenue from Long Meadow Street to Laurel Street; Lawnwood Avenue from Long Meadow Street to Fairview Street; and Meadow Road from Long Meadow Street to the cul-de-sac. The Barkall Road Bridge is about to undergo some work. This is a MassDOT project to resurface the bridge. Work is expected to begin the middle to the end of August and be completed by November fifteenth. The full extent of the work, partial or full lane closures and detours, are still under consideration. Town officials have met with MassDOT officials and expressed concern over a full closure. Once a traffic plan has been finalized, details will be shared. A contract has been signed with Mass West Construction, Inc. for the north interceptor, sanitary sewer pipe, manholes, service laterals, and trench repair work. The project's been in the work for several years, and its anticipated completion date is December of twenty twenty-four. Massachusetts Disaster Relief Fund, with the signing of the FY twenty-five state budget by the governor last week, language was enacted, creating a state disaster relief and resiliency fund. Some important points to note with this new fund. And while the fund is now created in perpetuity, the funding allocation of fourteen million is only a one-time transfer. To keep it fully funded, we have to continue our advocacy with legislators to continue replenishing the account every year. We're awaiting clarity on whether the funds are available now or if a transfer must wait until the end of fiscal year twenty-five. Overall, it's great news for emergency managers and all of our communities. Chief Dearborn was an advocate for this type of fund, so I thank him for his work, along with the efforts that were spearheaded by Representative Natalie Blay, Representative Bill Driscoll, and Senator Joe Commerford. They identified this need following last year's flooding and advocated with state House leaders to ensure this was in the budget. And now they need to develop clear eligibility guidelines, documentation, and just overall how we would unlock these funds during times of need or state emergency declarations. So we hope that emergency managers will have a seat at the table as all of that is developed. Office of Emergency Medical Services, or O E M S, just completed an inspection of the Long Meadow Fire Department ambulance service. And for the second year in a row, Long Meadow Fire Department received a perfect score with no citations or improvement suggestions. The inspection entails the checking of hundreds of items and records. The inspector stated that your service is the model everyone should follow. Special credit is owed to Fire Prevention Officer Ben Sloan and Fire Lieutenant Dennis Gardner for their hard work preparing for the inspection and all the work they do through the year to maintain this high level of perfection. And also a thank you to all the L F D. members who contribute daily to maintaining this high standard. A draft request for proposal has been developed to study Town Hall, Community House, and Old Town Hall. The scope of the project is to assess the needs of general maintenance of the facilities, capital improvement items, code upgrades, and a staffing structure and budget for the entirety of the Facilities Division of the D P W. The project will analyze the current use of the three municipal buildings and recommend options for the highest, best use of the buildings and parcels. The project will conclude with a final report. The scope is still being finalized with the expectation of it being sent out to bid by the middle of September. A change happened on the Westcom Board of Directors. A reorganization vote, as required by the district agreement, was held in the middle of July. I've been the Chair of the Westcom Board of Directors for almost five years, and I was very happy to support the nomination of Tom Christiansen, the East Long Meadow Town Manager, who will now serve as the new Chair of the Board of Directors for Westcom. Installation work on the new equipment... Playground equipment at Center and Blueberry has completed, and work is starting at Wolf Swamp. Within the next few weeks, the contractor for the rubberized surface will be in town to install. A grand opening event will be scheduled for September, and details will be shared for all to attend. And as Josh stated during public... or during Select Board comment, there is a butters meeting for Williams Middle School project on Thursday, August fifteenth, at seven P. M. Sorry, that's the Glenbrook project, but regarding the Williams site. And again, that's Thursday, August fifteenth, at seven P. M. here at the high school. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. And we will allow Select Board folks to make any comments or ask any questions about the Tom Anderson Board to act with duty poll application here. Can I entertain a motion to move into a public hearing for the EverSource poll application or poll petition?
So move.
Second.
All right, Mike.
Mr. Hemophy?
Yes.
Mr. Shorco?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
All right, great. So do we have votes from EverSource there?
Go ahead.
How's everyone doing?
Great.
All right, great. So thank you, folks, for joining us, and I'll kind of hand it over to you to let you... to let folks know, you know, why you're here and what this petition is about.
Sure. So EverSource has requested permission to install seven joint-owned poles and primary cable on Anthony Road. The poles will be located approximately thirteen feet off the center line of the road, trying to stay two foot off the roadway. Poles will be forty-foot Class One poles, and the purpose for the pole relocation is to accommodate the Town Riverfront Project and move the primary overhead cable out of the wooded area.
Okay. Do we have any questions, comments from the Select Board?
Can you actually introduce yourself and give your position?
Jason, I'm a field engineer for EverSource.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just quick. What's the height and the poles they're replacing? I noticed that in one case, you're putting... You know, it looks like from the diagram you're replacing fewer poles, but it may not be accurate. Can you just...
So we're actually relocating a whole pole line out of the wooded area. Part of it is to accommodate the Riverfront Conservation Project that's going on. The other part is to get the primary cable out of the way of the yacht club.
And the current poles are also forty feet high?
Some were thirty-five.
Okay, and I guess what I'm missing... Again, I'm looking at a diagram here. You're moving them from, what I guess is the west side of the road to the east side of the road, correct?
Correct.
And that means that the service lines to the houses will now go across the road?
Yep, some of them.
Okay.
So you are from the Conservation Commission?
Correct.
Could you introduce yourself and just...
Yeah, David, you may.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And give your perspective on this?
So yeah, so it's to support the Riverfront Project that we have. We've awarded a CPC grant to fund it. We've been mapping it out for a couple of years now. And basically, there's poles in the middle of the woods that we want to relocate out to the street, which would then support expansion of the parking lot for that area.
Do you want to tell just those who aren't aware of what the Riverfront Project is, look to educate?
Sure. So the Riverfront Conservation Area, it's a open, about two-acre parcel of land on the riverfront, right next to the Pioneer Valley Yacht Club. And basically, it's... There's grassy areas, but there's no picnic tables, limited parking, and we want to make it ADA accessible with pathways, picnic tables, benches, what have you. And these poles are basically in the middle of the woods. And so even from a, like, I think, reliability standpoint to the Pioneer Valley Yacht Club, and then the houses along there, I mean, it's in the woods with trees overhanging them, what have you. And I think, Jason, too, it's going to improve reliability for...
Correct.
The residents and the town in general, too.
Anyone who goes over there can... You can see the floodlines around. Is there any safety concerns? I mean, there are already power lines there, but is anything being done differently due to flooding concerns?
No.
All right.
And this was on... It was reviewed by DigSafe, right? So there's another... There's no other utilities underground, what have you. And they're going to be in the Gassick Farm area, right along the edge of the road where the other ones already are. So presently, they come along the road and it curves, and they actually go across the street. And then it's just going to follow the east side of the street, to Mark's point.
Just as a comment, the picture that I have in front of me doesn't do justice to what you just, you both just said. I mean, it just shows three existing poles on the west side, converted to seven poles on the east side. But I understand.
Are you, is this the drawing you have?
That's the drawing I got.
Oh, yeah, it definitely shows more than three poles on that side of the road.
The circles with the Xs through the middle?
Those are the ones that are getting removed altogether. The other two are existing. Those are going to, there's three others existing that are going to stay to carry the primary or their service line back to that side of this road.
Okay, so.
So some of these red dots are pre, are currently?
The red dots are the proposed poles.
Are the new ones.
Correct.
I think Mark is saying there's three gray ones.
Right, the three gray ones are the ones getting removed, and there's three black dots that are hard to see from the contrast of the picture that are the existing poles on the other side of the road.
So the service lines to the houses will literally go from pole to pole across the street and then to the house?
Right, to keep the height over the road. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I get it. Thanks.
And in your, I'm sorry, was there any comment by the yacht club or by these residences in favor or?
So the yacht club actually, we were originally only proposing to move the two in the woods. The yacht club actually came before Jason and everyone else because they have a reliability standpoint, too, where the existing lines are. Masts of boats with, sailboats with higher masts, what have you. It's like, it's harder for them to get through. And even the fire department has a boat down there, and they talked about improving the service to the fire department, being able to access with their larger trucks, what have you, to get down there. So they were very much in favor of it, and they approached.
Yeah, they asked us to do the rest of it instead of just the first two.
Correct, okay.
And no opposition from the residents?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay, anything else to the board?
When's the, when's the project supposed to kind of come off the ground?
Once we get permission from this, then we can finish designing the job and get them to start moving the stuff.
And like six months it'll take, or?
I think it would only take a couple of weeks to do the actual work.
But. Seems like a pretty common sense, just looking at the drawing and the project. And I've sat on some of the Conservation Commission meetings, and I appreciate all the work that you did as well with this project. So I think it's a great project, and I don't see any issue why we should deny the polls.
What was beneath? I'm going to make a motion to close the hearing unless there's any public comment here.
Second.
I do not see anyone with public comment. Beneath is still here, the screen is just getting.
He's a grizzly bear.
Can I close it?
No, no, it just keeps on disconnecting.
I'll send you a picture.
So we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? No, all right, Mike?
Mr. Hamaphy?
Yes.
Mr. Zerka?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Beneath, if nobody objects, I'm going to make a motion to approve the EverSource petition for installing poles along Anthony's Road as indicated.
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, Mike?
Mr. Hamaphy?
Yes.
Mr. Zerka?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for joining us, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so let's go back to the town managers for Lynn just went through it. Do we have any comments or any to the select board? Does anyone have anything to say about it?
Just a quick question. Lynn, was, is the schedule for the playground installation before school starts, or is it going to be kind of? You know, because we're getting down there right now.
Yeah, the goal.
The surface particularly.
Yeah, the goal is to have it all done before school starts.
I had a question about the Massachusetts Disaster Relief Fund, which sounds great, but I just was wondering, when you say the fund's created in perpetuity, but the funding allocation is fourteen million, is only a one-time transfer? Want to clarify that? Just, is it, if something were to happen, we needed the funds? I'm not sure I understand. Is it like, if we needed the funds, it would be fourteen million, or we owe, that's our contribution?
No, this is a statewide emergency disaster fund. So when the flooding happened last year and all those communities and farms and roads were washed out, that funding source could have been applied for to help repair the damage.
But we need to advocate for it to keep getting funded.
I see.
Right now, it's only going to be fourteen million, and that's it.
Statewide, that's a fund for the entire state.
Oh, okay.
It's not just for Long Meadow.
I did not understand that. I see. That's modest. Understood.
We don't have any requests pending.
I see what you mean.
Luckily, we did not suffer the damage like some of the communities north of us did.
Okay.
Okay, great. Anything else on that?
And just real quick, the playground, so Lynn, is that going to be some of the ADA accessibility work that we?
Yep.
If that's all, then we will move over to full business. So I will entertain a motion to approve the meetings for the June third, twenty twenty-four meeting.
So move.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, Mike?
Mr. Hamaphy?
Yes.
Mr. Zerka?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Epstein.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
All right. Okay, and now we've got our continued discussion about water and sewer rates. And Lynn, you prepared a memo. Do you want to start off with that?
If you'd like me to, sure. So I went back and watched the July fifteenth meeting to just view that conversation again, to see if there were takeaways that you were expecting staff to prepare for you. And so with that, I created a new table that's attached to the agenda that uses the same format that we've been using, but applies the new scenario to change the fixed meter revenue rate. I'm sorry, the fixed meter revenue, increasing it to two hundred thousand, up from the original one thirty, one hundred and thirty thousand that both the finance director and I had prepared in all of the other proposals. And so with, with that, there's three new scenarios for you to consider. One is simply just increasing that fixed meter revenue charge and not using retained earnings, and then a use of fifty thousand dollars in retained earnings and a use of a hundred thousand dollars in retained earnings. And then the difference is, it shows you in the per-unit cost and then the percentage increase. And in this case, this was done with a seventy-eight percent increase regardless of meter size. So a seventy-eight percent increase consistent across the board for the meter charges. In the scenarios that had been presented at the last meeting, when I had DPW verify those, the increases were north of a hundred and fifty percent, and it was changing depending on the meter size. So in talking with staff, we wanted a consistent increase, not a, that was our proposal here tonight. And so that covers the whole meter rate change discussion.
Lynn, can I just ask a quick question on that? Can you give an example of who would have, or what business would have a four-inch or three-inch meter?
Most of the larger-sized meters are municipal or school.
Oh, makes sense. All right, thanks.
Okay, and then on the same memo, I added some information in there about exemptions, because I know that did come up at the last meeting. And I put a rough number to that, just in case you did want to consider that. And this would be going off of the exemptions issued through the assessor's office. There's approximately a hundred and eight now. And it's, it would equate to roughly thirty-one hundred dollars in lost revenue if you were to do that. And then, lastly, on the memo, is if you make no change to the fixed meter charges. I just reiterated those scenarios from July fifteenth.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lynn. Anyone have a comment they'd like to make?
I can try to sum up kind of where I think the consensus has been. I know we've all spent a lot of time looking at this individually, studying it and discussing it, and I appreciate Lynn doing the memo, which is very helpful in summarizing it as well. I felt like the consensus after our last meeting was that we did not feel like we had enough retained earnings to consider using those funds to mitigate the rate. We're below their target of five hundred thousand by quite a bit. So the discussion had gone to Mark's proposal of slightly decreasing the rate by increasing fixed costs, which seemed commensurate with the reason why the costs are going up after our questioning of the Springfield Sewer Water Commission. So I appreciated Lynn creating that, you know, sample of raising the possibility of funds from the fixed cost from one thirty to two hundred, to showing us what that would do. I personally think that that is a perfectly fine idea, stemming off what Mark's original proposal was. So I feel like that, I hope will bring us to where we are today as far as the discussion.
Okay, thank you. Dan, did I see you with your hand up?
Now I do. Thank you. Yeah, so I agree with much of what Andrew has said in terms of the rates here that are in front of us. I spent, Lynn, I can't tell you how many hours I spent with you just going over this over the past few months. We've deliberated, we've debated this issue, you know, for months. I wish that the timing of the study would allow us to get the presentation from tie-in bond, look at what our longer-term plan is when it comes to water sewer, the projects that we have. We can then come up with a plan that ties the town to projects that the town needs. We all know when the study comes out that there's going to be a lot of dollar signs, a lot of projects that we're trying to fit into the dollars as well. But I, no disrespect to myself or colleagues here, but I really think we need to set, to set the rate, follow the policy that we have in place for water sewer rates. We're not using the retained earnings funds for that. We set a rate based on what Springfield has provided us with that increase. And then when we have the tie-in bond presentation in front of us, we're all well-equipped to then roll out some of the items that we've talked about, whether it's something that I know Beneath has talked about as well as myself, I think Josh as well, in terms of providing some, some help, assistance to our aging population, to our veterans, to folks that fit into the population underneath the assessor's office. So I guess, long story short, I believe we need to just set the rate, and then we need to, as a, as a board, come together after the presentation and then implement a water rate that makes sense based on the needs of the town. We've been trying to figure this out for twenty years. We've had, I don't know, three different studies that have been done, and we're still debating this, just this year alone, you know, three or four times. So that's what my recommendation is. Let's set a rate, and then let's all agree that we're going to tackle this, whether it's the start of twenty twenty-five calendar year. But I think that's, when we actually have the data in front of us, that's what's going to help us. And that's, we're going to be able to make the best decisions for next year and the year after. So that's my take on this. I don't think we're going to solve the water rates and a lot of the questions that we have tonight or tomorrow. We should listen to the experts and actually follow through on what they are suggesting to us. It's taxpayer dollars, and they're the professionals. It's not Mark, it's not myself, it's not Andrew Beneath or Josh. Tie-in bond is the professionals that we've given money to look at this, and that's going to give us the best approach moving forward. So I just want to be really clear that that's how I feel about this.
Great, thanks, Dan. Josh?
Well, Dan, I disagree. We are experts now at this point. I think we've spent long enough on it. I think what we're, I want to increase the fixed meter rate. It's a pretty modest increase, seventy thousand dollars. It's not much to each person, but I think it much better reflects what the realities of. I'd said it a month ago, I could probably repeat it verbatim, but it's, everyone has to be hooked up to the system. It doesn't matter how much water you use. So I think it makes sense to up that a little bit. I see what you're saying, Dan. But what I, and we got an email on this, actually, this, that's on the agenda today. Why are you trying to artificially keep rates down? I don't think that's what we're doing. To me, in my mind, we are, I would like us to be a little gradual on what we're going up because there is going to be sticker shock. If we got up right away to where other people, other towns are, it's going to be big money. And the tie-in bond study, it's not going to tell us the lower rates. It's going to tell us, it's going to tell us, we got a ton of projects to do. But I think that setting a reasonable increase on the fixed meter rate, I think now is a good idea. And with the idea that, I think we should go back to that in the future and look at that and try to have that be a bit more fair to show what the, just the carrying costs that we have for this, for our water. Our rates are one thing, but what we saw from Springfield, it costs a lot to keep the system going. So given that it's a pretty mild increase at this point, I think, yeah, we should absolutely, we need that information. But I think that, to me, it still makes sense to give this modest increase now. So what Andrew said, I think reflects what I was, I'm thinking as well, and that's what I would like to do tonight.
Great, thanks, Josh. Mark?
Yeah, I think we have all the information that we need, not all the information we could get. You can get a lot more to certainly set the rates. I do have a question or a concern about the recommendation to just increase all the fixed rates by whatever it was, twenty-something percent. And I say that because that, you know, my analytical mind says we need some justification. Now, having said that, there's absolutely no process by which the fixed sewer rate was set that I can know of, that anybody knows of. It was just set. And so we're using that number, and I don't believe it's ever gone up since it was implemented. The question is, how do we, you know, how do we identify the basis for the fixed rate cost? It's, well, at one point, we did it through a distributed process, and now we're doing it through just increasing everything. I will say that that puts an increased burden on the lowest users based on this across-the-board twenty-eight percent increase in, in the fixed rate, or seventy-eight percent increase, I think it was Lynn said, in the fixed rate costs. And, you know, one of the things we had early on from Ian Cottington was an evaluation of, I think he had four or five different users of four or five different volumes and what the changes would make. You know, fixed rates do burden the, you know, the smallest users, and if we overly increase the fixed rates, it overly burdens the smallest users. But other than that, I think Josh is right that we've got the decisions we're going to make. And oh, by the way, as I've learned, we're making decisions for a year. We're not making decisions forever. And this will no doubt be changed multiple times over the next several years based on input that we get from other people like tie-in bond. So, you know, I'll support it, but I do think that the seventy-eight percent across-the-board meter charge is a little high.
But I think, Mark, that's kind of my point, though. I think, yeah, we could have a year, but we also could have this for three months, and we get the presentation, and we can take this back up as a board. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm suggesting, is if we want to focus on some of the folks in town right now, under the current situation, or proposal, I suppose, would be an increase for these low-water users. So that's why I'm suggesting to the board that we make a commitment to set a rate now, and we come back to the table in three months when we actually have the data and the professionals have done their due diligence, and they can help us with these recommendations, and we can try to implement some of the items. That's just, that's my point. I don't want to wait another year for this if we don't have to. I want to try to do this right and act on it, because like I said before, we've waited so many years to actually put these in place and implement items from the professionals, and this is an opportunity for us.
Dan, I appreciate your comments. My experience is that what we will get from consultants is a consulting theoretical decision, and we'll still have to make the decision. When it came to adjusting the sewer rate system several years ago, it took us two or three years and multiple consultants giving us competing, you know, recommendations till we came up with what seems to be working, because we've gotten a very few, if any, complaints about the new sewer system. So I wouldn't put, I don't put as much, you know, faith in tie-in bond's going to give us all the answers we want, and as soon as they come. us all the answers we want and as soon as they come along, I think even when we get that report, it's gonna take us a while to push our way through that, get public comments, hear what's going on, and it's still gonna be this, this fiscal year before we're done. And so that, that's the reason I'm willing to stick with it.
I would, I would be asking for this fixed change regardless of what info we had, I think, just because it makes sense to me. I'd also just point out that we're talking about twelve to twenty-two dollars per year for ninety-eight percent of our users. And I bet a big chunk of the other ones are the town for the, for the big users. So that's why I think it's, it's a modest increase and I, I think it makes sense.
I'll just echo that. I mean, I think, Dan, you have, that's an excellent sentiment. I don't think any of us would disagree with the idea of finding ways to mitigate expenses for populations like those in need or the elderly or the blind. But the reality here is that the only thing we could do to, the only part of the pie here that we can actually have any discretion over is this fixed income, which is only four dollars for most homes per quarter. And so we're talking about increasing it seventy-eight percent, but seventy-eight percent of like four dollars is like six dollars and ninety cents. So the point is that, that it's just such a small amount of expense. And Mark made the point, it's a seventy-eight percent, sounds like a lot, like a large increase, but when you're talking about such a small initial figure, it's really modest. So I just think that the consultants will tell us certain things, but in reality, we can use this eventually, I think, to help people who need exemptions, as well as to keep that in mind for all different expenses we have in the town. But for this, it's probably not going to make a significant difference in people's, like, you know.
Lynn, if those exemptions, if we gave the, the assessor's exemptions, the hundred and eight people, do you have a scenario, or in this scenario, would that be spread among the other fixed charges or on the rate?
You can only do it on fixed charges.
Oh, okay, so if we exempt that, then it would just be like another penny to everyone on the fixed rate.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Spread thirty-one hundred dollars over all the households.
Right. It's less than, yeah.
Over five thousand households is sixty cents. It's not, it's almost not worth doing it. Maybe it is to the people who get benefits from it, but literally if you're spending, splitting thirty-one hundred dollars over fifty-four hundred water rate from water users.
At that point, I was just wondering, is it, how much of a logistical issue?
You're right. It's probably more operational issues for the billing than it is the value.
It's pretty straightforward. There's already a discount for stormwater, it's built into the policy, so those that apply for it get that. So there's already a mechanism within the billing system to do it. And the reason I put this on this memo here is, as I'm sure you hear, as I hear, especially when I attend my monthly conversation with the town manager, those living on fixed incomes, mostly our seniors, ask for any sort of relief that makes it possible for them to stay in town. And as water sewer commissioners, this is the only area that you're able to do that in for water and sewer rates. So that's why this was included in this memo here.
So based on the discussion, I think I'd like to make a motion that we set a rate that increases the fixed charges to, to generate an additional seventy thousand dollars in revenue, which according to Lynn's calculations would set the water rate at four dollars and fifty-two cents per unit.
Would you clarify to just say that the rates, the fixed charges should be established based on the chart that was provided, the seventy-eight percent increase? So we know how you want us to divide that out?
Sure.
Cause there's six different meter sizes.
Yeah, so moved. So basically according to your chart in which the different meters would have the same percentage increase.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Andrew, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, great. Any further discussion on this? Mark?
Yeah, I'd just like a final clarification, what we're setting, what that works out to in the water rate? And what that is, is an increase?
Twenty percent.
According to Lynn's memo, it's four dollars and fifty-two cents a unit. Is that correct, Lynn?
Yep.
So the motion.
Twenty percent increase.
It would, I think would be clarifying to say, and set the water rate at, and therefore set the water rate at four dollars and fifty-two cents per unit.
I think you said that, yeah.
That's what, yep.
Any other discussion? All right, Mike?
Mr. Hamavati?
Yes?
Mr. Zorka?
No.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you. Josh?
I'd like to move that we, from the fixed rate, sorry, fixed charge, that we grant exemptions to those who qualify under the assessor's office exemptions for the, sorry, I think I'm being cyclical, but for the fixed rate charge.
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
I guess the clarification is that exemption from all fixed charges or from the increase in fixed charges?
I think we, can we do that or does it have to be from the, what, what is your scenario? The three thousand dollars?
The whole charge.
Yeah, I, I think for the whole.
I'm just asking for a clarification.
That's why I asked Lynn for clarification. Yes, from the, from the whole fixed charge.
Second.
Anything else? All right, Mike?
Mr. Hamavati?
Yes?
Mr. Zorka?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
All right. And so we've also got to set the sewer, stormwater rates?
Yes.
As well? Entertaining discussion or motions on either of those?
Well, I'll, I don't believe that there's, A, a whole lot of options with the stormwater rate. The stormwater rate is based on the budget and our, our prior decision to gradually move stormwater from a tax-based system to a fee-based system. We're not quite there and so I think that, you know, I'm, I'm gonna move that we set the stormwater rate at an annualized cost of one hundred and six dollars and thirty-two cents per ERU, which is the equivalent residential unit.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
Lynn, I just pulled it up. Could you just remind us what our sewer retained earnings are at and what our policies are?
This is sewers.
Or, sorry, stormwater.
We do not have any stormwater retained earnings, not that I am aware of. I don't believe we do.
Oh, I'm mixed, yeah. I did have sewer on the mind. Never mind.
Yeah, heads in the s-.
Yeah.
All right, there's nothing further than Mike?
Mr. Hamavati?
Yes?
Mr. Zorka?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
So now we've got sewer rates left to determine?
I'll, I'll make the motion here too, and I think that the sewer rate is also not, I can't hear it, is not too, I don't believe too controversial, that our sewer rate, I'm gonna make a motion that we, that we set our, our sewer rate at three dollars and fifty-one cents per year with a fifty-five unit per quarter cap on the, the water usage that, that derives the sewer rate.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
Just to clarify, you said three dollars and fifty-one cents per unit, not a year.
Three dollars and fifty-one cents, I'm sorry, per unit, per year, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Three thousand and fifty-one cents per unit, per year with a cap on units of fifty-five units in any quarter.
Okay, any further discussion?
And just for anyone watching who isn't aware, Mark, do you wanna explain the fifty-five, the cap? It was pretty, it was pretty easy, I remember.
No, it, it.
It's time to end.
No, no, no. If sewer use, sewer fees, excuse me, sewer fees are based on water use. So for every hundred gallons of water you use, you will get charged by today's decision, four dollars and fifty-two cents for water and you will get charged three dollars and fifty-one cents for sewer. But when your water use meets fifty-five units in any sales quarter or any quarter of our year, you will no longer be generating sewer fees for any additional water use. And that compensates primarily for agricultural use for lawn watering. Did I get that right?
Yeah, we can get Lisa in here just for old times' sake. No, I think that's helpful for people who may not understand. Oh, she is here. No, don't worry.
Lisa runs the show, so she's got it.
Okay, anything else? No, okay, Mike?
Mr. Hamavati?
Yes?
Mr. Zorka?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you guys. Next up, we've got the agreement with the Springfield Water and its Sewer Commission. Lynn, do you wanna set this one up?
Yeah, just, Mr. Hamavati, if I may, Lisa just pointed out actually that the sewer cap is currently only in summer quarters, not all the quarters.
Right, because we, this whole conversation, that's right.
You're right.
Nobody's watering the lawn engine.
Thank you, Lisa. You're right. It's only in summer quarters. So for the, the two houses that use over fifty-five units of water in the fall and winter, they pay the sewer rates for that. That's correct.
So if you wanna just amend it to?
So I'll, yes, thank you, Lisa. I, I'd like to amend the motion to say with a fifty-five unit cap for the second, it's actually the fourth and first quarter, first and fourth quarters of the fiscal year.
Second.
Any further discussion now? All right, so let's do this again, Mike?
Mr. Hamavati?
Yes?
Mr. Zorka?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Okay, great. So now moving over to the agreement with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission. Lynn, do you wanna set this one up?
Sure. So in part of our review of the agreements with Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, this was on your agenda a couple of months ago as well. We have a current contract with Springfield Water and Sewer. It's been operating on one-year extensions for quite some time. When I just received this latest one, it caused me to pause and, and question really who should be signing this. The town manager has authority to sign contracts, but this one is a little different because you are the water sewer commissioners and this is a contract between the water sewer commissioners and Springfield Water and Sewer. I did run this through town council, they concurred, it should come in front of the select board annually or hopefully at some point we'll have a new five-year contract from Springfield that you would then need to discuss and, and hopefully approve. So what you have here tonight is just a one-year extension. We did include the original twenty-ten contract, that has just been the one that we've been operating those one-year extensions off of, and Springfield also provided us the registration for running the water system.
All right, great, thank you. So here we would just be voting, right, to ask you, Lynn, to sign this contract?
No, you would all be signing it as Springfield, as, I'm sorry, as water sewer commissioners.
Oh, okay, sorry, I'm, maybe it goes along.
No, it, it probably has the town manager listed on there, but I did question that through Springfield Water Sewer and through town council and it should be signed by the water sewer commissioners.
Okay, great, thank you. Any clarification? Andrew?
Lynn, with these annual extensions, were there changes in the terms or is it just continued status quo?
All the contractual language is the same with the exception of the expiration date.
Okay. Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, there, there are some administrative, I won't say enforcement, but administrative requirements or obligations, even in the original contract, that frankly neither side is, is holding to. You know, we talked about the water and sewer commissions need to send us information in November and, and we don't get that and then us to do, how we as water and sewer commissioners, we're signing it, but how do, can we delegate the, the enforcement or the, the maintenance of this to somebody so, because, you know, I mean, that just bothers me. Why have a contract if neither side's fulfilling the obligations of the contract or, or meeting the, the detailed terms of the contract? And I, I'd just like to be able to say, Lynn, you know, put this on your list of things to do or delegate it to the DPW or whoever, whoever it is, because I think for us to go through this is, is not reasonable to ask us to do that.
Maybe we have a select board liaison to Springfield, and I think you were raising your hand, Mark.
Much what you asked for, Dan.
You know, the problem is, we, we saw how they'll treat any of us. They, they'll say, yeah, too bad, read the contract and then that's it. Because what are you gonna do? They need your water.
So you're saying you're going with one of the attorneys on the side?
Damn it, no. No, I, but there's, I don't know. It's, it's a good question, but it, it could take an inordinate amount of time to spin your wheels. Is there something specifically that you were, you're concerned with, Mark?
Well, clearly the number one thing is the obligation to get their, their capital and budgetary information much sooner, right?
Well, yeah, like it has dates in it, which they, didn't they, they do give it to us, but then they change it after. So they're, yeah, so they're kind of in, in compliance, but then they can amend it, which it probably says in here somewhere that they can make reasonable changes.
I mean, you know, I think there are obligations on our part too, but, you know.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm definitely not saying it, you're, that's not, that's a bad idea. I'm just trying to think of.
I mean, I'm, clearly I'm, I'm in favor of the extending the, the supply agreement.
We need water.
I just want to enforce it and make sure that both sides are doing what they need to do. And I don't know how to better do that or do it at all. And we can leave it the way it is, but we're just gonna end up with the same issues the next time these things arise.
Yeah, I just, part of the problem is we have a, and be frankly, we have a shortage of people in the water department and down in the DPW who normally you would say, gee, can you take this on? But they're trying to run a department and not necessarily administer contracts. Maybe we can give this to the business manager. That's actually what I was thinking, cause I, I imagine Lynn thinks has enough on her plate.
Well, no.
But, but yeah, maybe if Lisa could take a look at it, if there's things that she could, could make sure that are happening or even at least let us know if dates aren't being met, I think that could be pretty useful. Does she comment on that, Mike?
I, I can say absolutely, we're, I don't think the expectation is that you guys would monitor every single clause of that contract. I will say though, that this is, we're just looking to extend this one-year agreement. The contract in and of itself has a lot of areas that need to be improved upon. I don't think that a lot of these deliverables have been met in the last decade that the contract's been in place. And so there is a lot of work to do and I know Springfield's working on their end of it, Mass DEP is involved and DPW, Lisa and Sean have been going through it and they have met with the EP related to our wholesale agreement. So I, I do think all of us around the table, including DPW, need to have a better handle on what we wanna see moving forward. As a result of the last meeting, we've already, Mike and I have already put a look ahead for your January meeting or December, I think it was, that Springfield Water and Sewer committed to coming back to you, so we're gonna hold them to that. That's a big first step.
Great, thank you, Lynn. Anyone else? All right, I will entertain a motion to- All right, I will entertain a motion to, you know, approve or sign this contract?
I move that we approve the Sixth Amendment to the Town of Long Meadow Water Supply Agreement with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, Mike?
Mr. Hemavati?
Yes.
Mr. Zorka?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you. Mike, do you want to just talk briefly about the next agenda item, the update on Royal Spice's liquor license?
Yes, definitely, so as you're aware, during the hearing at the last meeting, there was some conversation about whether or not the address was correct, it was eight thirty-seven B or eight twenty-seven B. It was, in fact, eight twenty-seven B and not eight thirty-seven B. Without going too deep into the memo, I ran it by town council, as well as the ABCC, who said that if the board is satisfied with the abutters notifications, because the abutters would not have changed regardless of the address, because it's all in one parcel in the Williams Shopping Mall, and they would accept and process the application. Town council advised them to submit an amendment for the change, which they have submitted and updated to the application. I did submit it to the portal to the ABCC, and it was since actually kicked back for, for other reasons, which is typical, sometimes it gets kicked back and they have to amend certain, certain pages, so they're in the process of getting me that application back to, to resubmit. So that, that happens occasionally with applications, as Josh could probably attest to. My recommendation would be to submit it as is, and you can have them, you know, resubmit for a change of license, or whatever you decide.
Sorry, Mike, what are our options?
Oh, sorry, so they submitted an amendment to those pages, which I included, which I uploaded to the ABCC portal, so, because you have a certain amount of time after the public hearing to upload those documents, so my suggestion would be just to accept the abutters notifications as, as were, if that makes sense.
Rather than put it in these amended pages?
Well, the amended pages were already included in the application.
Oh, okay.
So like, they submitted it, and by the time they submitted it, they got it to me within twenty-four hours.
Within three days, yeah, okay.
I think the question is, do we go, have to go through another hearing?
No.
Or just accept the changes?
I, do we even need to, yeah, we should have accepted changes, right? But no, we don't have to do another hearing if they, I, ABCC has digged me for much worse than that, or much less than this, but I'm, I'm happy for Royal Spice that we don't have to start the clock over. So I, yeah, I think we should accept the amended, or vote to accept amended pages and wish them luck.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Do you want to make the question? Yeah, sure, I was just waiting for somebody else. Yeah, I, I move that we accept the amended application for Royal Spice Inc. doing business as Royal Spice at eight twenty-seven B Williams Street.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, Mike?
Mr. Hemavati?
Yes.
Mr. Zorka?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, so now we're moving on to new business, and we're moving on to the municipal fiber task force recommendation memo. So the recommendation memo is attached to the agenda, hopefully everyone had a chance to read it, especially the last section, I think titled "The Fiber Spring Recommendation" was, is the part that kind of sums everything up. So, you know, I'm going to go through the whole memo, but I'm just going to kind of walk through some, some key points on it, some, some important parts that I think are important, and then we actually have members of the municipal fiber task force in attendance tonight, so, you know, after I'm done kind of walking through the memo, they're also free to come to the microphone and maybe, you know, add some thoughts about, you know, our, our work, and then we can, we can answer questions. So, you know, the municipal fiber task force was formed about a year ago to explore bringing fiber internet to Long Meadow. The task force was comprised of nine town residents and myself, and these nine residents brought a variety of experiences from running networks of entire universities, to building their own network companies, to cybersecurity, to, you know, working on the business side of it, and to being longtime leaders in our community. And over the last year, these residents have put in countless hours, and have put in so much of their own time and energy, it's the work of this task force that it's really been remarkable, and I'm so proud to have worked alongside them, and the town is so lucky that has their passion, and their energy, and their expertise, you know, towards this work. And the fact that folks in the industry who know it so well have devoted so much time to this effort, I think that should tell you how important it is to bring fiber internet to Long Meadow. So when I campaigned last year for the select board, I talked to folks all over town, and the issue of internet kept coming up over and over again, and it came up across every demographic. Folks are unsatisfied with their current internet offering, they're not satisfied with the price, the speed, the reliability, and just the overall performance. And what we've seen over the last few years is that almost every other town around us has observed these same problems, and they've all taken steps towards bringing fiber internet to their needs, allies. So we have the advantage of looking at what communities around us have already done and learn from them. We started this process by researching all the different ways that fiber is brought into a town. So research approaches used all over the country, from towns in Idaho, Ohio, Utah, Arizona, and of course, towns in Western Mass. And ultimately, we narrowed it down to the three different methods or approaches to offer in Western Mass communities. So the three approaches that towns in Western Mass have used are to welcome a private company to come to town and provide fiber internet. Another approach is to offer fiber internet through a open access model, and then the most common approach has been to offer town-owned fiber internet. And we also identified four criteria that we felt that fiber internet should hit. Availability, meaning that every household should have the opportunity to connect to fiber internet if they so choose. Affordability, make sure that's affordable for folks. That it should be an offering that allows the town to control its own future in regards to fiber, so that it can adapt to the changing fiber landscape and adapt to technology. And that this offering allows the town to generate revenue. And additionally, our group's discussions focused on how internet is used in the 21st century, how it's being used today, and how it's going to be used in the future, and that the internet today and in the future is more like a utility. Everyone relies on the internet, and it's becoming increasingly important in almost every phase of life, work, school, telehealth, entertainment, public safety, you name it. And fiber internet is also more environmentally friendly than what we currently have with coaxial cables. So we, after doing research, we held interviews with vendors offering these three different approaches. The interview and question-answer sessions were substantive and robust, and, you know, went well onto the night. We even afterwards participated in facilities tours with some of these vendors, and we also reached out to other communities in Western Mass to learn from their experience of bringing fiber to their communities. And after all of these interviews and tours and outreach, it became clear that town-owned fiber internet was the only approach that met all of our criteria. Motion was made to stop considering the other approaches, and the motions passed unanimously. In towns that offer fiber internet in Western Mass, offering it through a town-owned network, like I said before, is the most common approach, and in the last section I talked about, the Fiber Spring Recommendation, it kind of goes into more detail about how, about why we ruled out the other approaches. And then a motion was subsequently made in our meetings to recommend that the town of Long Meadow partner with Fiber Spring to bring fiber internet to Long Meadow. Fiber Spring is a branch of South Hadley Gas and Electric, and Fiber Spring has a partnership with Foliogas Electric. So the Foliogas Electric and, and South Hadley Gas and Electric basically together have this entity called Fiber Spring. And they, the way the partnership works is that Foliogas Electric is kind of the wholesaler, they, they provide the fiber network, and Fiber Spring offers all the admin, so they do the billing, the technical support, you know, the outreach, all of that. And Fiber Spring provides internet not only at South Hadley, but also Chic Sperry and Library. And so if Long Meadow were to partner with Fiber Spring, Fiber Spring would be project manager of the fiber network build-out. They would then provide admin services after, you know, after they build out to our customers. So in a customer's bill, a portion would go to Fiber Spring for all the admin, but the rest of the bill would be revenue to the town of Long Meadow. And we, you know, the, the vote to choose Fiber Spring is unanimous, which was surprising, because, you know, we have so many different perspectives, so many different views on this task force, but I think the strength of Fiber Spring's presentation and their ability to just show us how everything worked, they really opened up the hood for us, and they were very honest with us about, you know, every price, every potential, you know, hardship, everything. They were so impressive that the vote to recommend them was unanimous. And their build-out in South Hadley is projected to come in under budget and have a schedule. Their leadership team was comprised of folks that were part of fiber build-outs in Westfield and Chickpea, and then, you know, obviously having that partnership with Foliogas Electric, who's also a veteran in the industry, that diversity of the experience is really important, because they understand the fiber landscape in Western Mass so well, and they have learned lessons from doing these build-outs in kinds of different ways in different communities, and, you know, based on that, they have new ideas and new approaches from that experience. Also, they offered us a pretty favorable contract term, so they offered us a five-year contract term, and so at the end of that five-year contract, Long Meadow will be completely built out. And Fiber Spring believes that our experience with them will be so positive that we will sign a new contract with them after five years. And I believe that that was the talent in their place, because where we had a partner who was willing to put some skin in the game and bet on themselves, that, that can be really advantageous for us. And another advantage is that Fiber Spring's completing their build-out of South Hadley this summer, so if we partner with them, we will be their next project, and so we will receive their full attention and effort. Fiber Spring is going to come and present at our next meeting, so we will get to meet, you know, their senior staff, and they're also going to bring along their CFO, so we can dive more into the financials then. But in broad strokes, the town will be divided into what's called fiber hoods. A website will be created where folks can express interest in bringing fiber to their home. The fiber hoods that have the most interest will be built out first, and the revenue generated will be used to pay debt service and to build out subsequent fiber hoods. This allows for towns to read and react, so that the build-out is done in a manner that makes, you know, a financial sense, and this is how all the communities around us that have done this have proceeded, by doing it in stages and using the revenues generated, the next steps. So, you know, in outreach done to other towns, we asked what the pitfalls or concerns with town-owned fiber were, and what we kept hearing over and over again from every community was that there are, that there are dead, that this is a home run, that there are upfront costs, but once customers begin connecting to fiber, there's potential to generate significant revenue, and for a town like Long Meadow, without many revenue sources, this will completely change our financial picture. And instead of sending, you know, having residents pay for internet, sending their money to big corporations, by switching to fiber internet instead, town residents will be sending their money back into the community, into, you know, our schools, into our roads, into our sidewalks, into our parks. And on top of that, they'll be getting a service that is faster and more reliable. So in terms of next steps, tonight, we're not asking the select board, you know, to do anything, to take any action. Fiber Spring is going to present at our next meeting, and they're going to be doing outreach events, you know, in the community, like tailoring at Pride or, you know, other events. In October, we're going to be scheduling an event to give residents an opportunity to meet Fiber Spring and ask questions. Then, what we are going to be asking the select board is that they approve two articles being placed on the Fall Special Town Meeting warrant. The first article is to, it is the second vote required to create the municipal light plant. If you guys recall, the first vote in May passed for a long way. And the second article that we're requesting the select board place on the warrant is an article to approve four hundred thousand dollars for Fiber Spring to submit poll applications, to get fiber on the polls, and to do design and engineering work. We wanted to proceed in this way because this is a big undertaking, and we wanted to put this, you know, up for a vote, you know, for the town, and we wanted to spend the time between now and November 12th, to educate the town about this, to do outreach, so that folks felt, you know, that they had their questions answered, that they felt good about this, and then, you know, ultimately give to them for a vote. If the municipal light plant is created on November 12th, and the funding is approved to begin work on poll applications and design and engineering, then we will bring a, an intergovernmental agreement to a subsequent select board meeting for the stuff where it's signed, so that we can enter into a partnership with Fiber Spring. So that's, you know, kind of going through the memo, you know, there's a lot more detail in the memo, like I said, this, you know, has been a year in the making, with a lot of folks putting a lot of time, but I don't know if there's anyone, you know, at the task force there that, you know, wants to come and fill my can, add anything that I, I may have missed, only give folks an opportunity if, if they'd like to do that, but if not, then, you know, we can move over to questions from the select board. I think, is that you, Henry, to raise your hand?
Step right up.
Hello, I'm-
All right, if you need, yeah, just, you know, name, address, and, you know, feel free to, to speak a little bit.
Henry Lanewett, sixteen Mass Ave. One of the, one of the questions I've been getting from folks as I talk about it in my close community of friends is, well, what happens when the cable TV goes away? That's one of the questions you'll get, because once this goes, there's, there's no more cable TV. So there are, the, the folks at Fiber Spring have told us, it becomes a process where you have to educate people. I'm streaming, I cut the cable a long time ago, and called Xfinity and told them to come and take all their copper away, but people stream with Netflix, and Hulu, and Disney. If they want to get YouTube TV, it's got all your local channels in it, and you can still put an antenna on your roof. So these are some of the questions that I, I predict we'll, we'll be answering for people in some of these public sessions.
Great, thank you, Henry. Bye, Dave.
I don't know, Josh had a question first, so I didn't know if you wanted-
That, that actually does, that was one of my questions, if, if we, to me, this is a no-brainer, and as soon as I, I felt great until you said, well, there's no downsides, and I said, oh, wait, that can't be true. Will, we've gotten letters from Comcast saying, oh, you're making a huge mistake, what are you doing? Is there any scenario where we build up enough of a base, or has this happened in other towns where Comcast pulls out, or will they change services in town when, when they do, when we do have enough of a base?
I don't think I could-
So, yeah, and some of these, oh, sorry, so, yeah, some of these communities, I mean, it is remarkable the, the take rate for fiber internet, I mean, you're seeing communities where ninety percent plus are moving over to fiber internet. I have not, I, you know, I think with these companies like Comcast and Spectra, which are the two big ones in the area, they don't have to pull out, they don't need to, their cables are already up on the poles, and so we haven't really seen anything in terms of them pulling out. What we are seeing is a concerted, concerted effort to stop towns from adopting fiber internet. So there is a dark money political action committee called Mass Priorities that has been spending significant money in Western Mass. You know, folks believe that they are backed by Comcast and Spectra, and they are, you know, doing canvassing, they're sending out mailers, they're basically trying to stop communities from moving over to town on fiber, because they know that it's a, you know, that's a death knell for them, that they can't compete with it, they can't compete with the speed, reliability, with the civic pride that comes with putting, you know, money back into your own community with the pricing, and so that's the approach they've taken. I mean, they have been unsuccessful in most communities, they've been successful in one community in, in getting a vote to go down to create a municipal light plant, but that is something that, you know, we- But that is something that, you know, we are aware of, that FiberSpring is aware of. And I think with a, with good outreach, with good education, and the pushback, that I trust the people of Long Meadow to be able to understand the difference here and understand what's going on.
So David Hart, 31 Wood Road. So Josh, kind of to answer your question, there's really two services that are provided to consumers today. It's bundled, using Comcast's own term, that you can get internet and TV on one bill. Essentially, what we'd be doing is taking over one aspect of that. That is the, providing the infrastructure for internet to be able to run from home through the FiberSpring network. Then you're left with a choice, which is great. This is what consumers want. Now you have the ability to say, I'll take Comcast TV package, or I'll take Hulu, or YouTube, or any of the other ones. And that competitiveness is what helps to be able to drive down the cost of the TV. The internet package that, this is one of the things that we discovered. I was actually in line at Comcast cutting the cable myself with a neighbor right next to me who lived in Long Meadow, getting a better service with their equipment for $20 less than they were trying to charge me. So the transparency of what they're billing, the services offered to the people in town, it's not on, it's not like, we offer this to Long Meadow. It's based on address. These people, these people are not playing above board. So for that perspective, we just talked about water and sewer rates. This is a chance for Long Meadow to control its own destiny with regards to something that will be as integral as water, sewer, electricity and gas. The internet is that important, having the ability to control our own destiny going forward. Today, through a partnership with FiberSpring, five years down the road, may be something that we do in town for ourselves. We have options, that's the great thing. But it is nonetheless, it puts us in control of our own destiny. We did also publish a document of FAQs. There are 50 towns in the state of Massachusetts right now who are offering an MLP service, the ability to also not only do internet, but also be the delivery provider for electricity. There are more options for us, once we get this started, to bring control back to the town and to the townspeople than just the internet.
Just one follow-up. Ben Brown, 8 Alcino Lane. Comcast has existed with other providers inside of the Eastern Mass 128 Belt for 30 years. Most towns have two operators, some towns have three. A lot of towns have Verizon, RCN and Comcast, all in the same town operating, and hasn't affected anyone's bottom line, really.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and, you know, I think Dave brought a good point too. I, with, and FiberSpring will discuss this when they come to our next meeting. But the way that they, you know, set up their appointments when folks are connected to fiber, they block off at least four hours. And what they do is they connect the home to fiber, and they also leave time to, you know, spend with folks so that they, if they're, you know, going to switch over to Hulu or Sling TV or YouTube TV, they'll actually sit down with folks and get them set up on all their devices, they'll help them with passwords, they'll help them with everything, so that by the time they leave, you know, folks will be up and running with everything that they need.
Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. You okay?
Yeah, and then I'll go after you.
Okay. So, thank you for your work on this. I think municipal fiber internet is the most important thing we can do, both from a service to customers and our residents, and also as a potential revenue source for the town. My concern is and has always been the economics of the program. And I read through this very carefully, and what, you know, I saw some proposed charges, but not the cost of the build out, nor did I see, although Venite just said something about subscription or take rate. You know, when we talked about this eight years ago, or six years ago, we got from people, oh, but I bundle phone, you know, cable and internet from Comcast, and I wouldn't switch because my internet is essentially 15 bucks a month extra because of the bundle. And then we get from people, you know, and frankly, I don't think Comcast will sit back and let us do this, you know, without responding financially. You know, they're likely to come back and say, well, if the town's going to offer it for X dollars, I'll undercut their price by whatever. And so I think having a financial model that's based on what we've seen in other communities would be very, very helpful for the town, especially when it comes down to saying, we need to borrow X number of dollars. You know, and the other thing is, what I heard was, this is a initial proposal for poll permits, right? A good percentage of our town, and I don't know what it is, but I bet you it's 25 to 40%, doesn't have polls. You know, they're underground. And so is somebody going to dig up the streets like Comcast did, and put, you know, it was actually Media One 40 years ago, you know, and put the, because potentially that's the difference between when I'll say, you know, a critical mass of subscribers and a not critical mass of subscribers, getting those, that other 25 to whatever percent of the town that doesn't have poll connections. And so I think that's important. Clearly, there's also a concern that I think the committee or whoever needs to be addressed. We did it somewhat with the streetlights when we bought the streetlights, but people need to understand what happens when a snowstorm comes and the wires go down, who's going to reinstall my fiber and all this kind of stuff? And people just want to know that, you know, frankly, it's not the town that's going to do it, there's going to be a service contract, or whatever the heck we're going to do. But those are all the concerns that I think between now and, I think, the fall town meeting that need to be addressed. Certainly, understanding the economics so that we know what the take rate is and we can, you know, we'll never know how many people in Long Meadow will take the internet service from this. But certainly, we, South Hadley is a very probably comparable community, and if, you know, they're at a high percentage, we can, or whatever percentage they are, we can use that. But also looking at the, you know, how we come up with the capital costs, whether this initial $400,000 will get us enough subscribers so that the town doesn't need to initiate another 400, you know, because building out fiber in this town is going to be big bucks overall.
So the $400,000 was just for poll applications?
Poll applications.
The actual build out would be its own series of bonds, which would be done through the MLP directly?
Right, right. It's kind of like an enterprise fund. The MLP will do it and pay for it out of the revenue.
Yep.
But it's important, I think, that we understand that the revenue can support those bonds.
So the, the, both FiberSpring and Whip City showed us projections. They both seem to show us that beneath 40% was the take rate needed to generate revenue. And they both showed South Hadley was over 40% take rate.
That's great.
And I think Westfield has never been below 40% in their build outs.
I think that's important, but it's important to share those as we ask the town to fund.
And, and, and Mark, and I appreciate that question, obviously. So the reason why we didn't get into it tonight is because we're going to have the chief financial officer at FiberSpring come at our next meeting. And that is like, you know, obviously going to the financials part of this is a longer discussion than the discussion we're even having tonight. So I wanted to just split it up and really dive into those numbers. They're going to have a spreadsheet, they're going to come with everything, and we're going to really dig into all of that at our September 3 meeting. Because that is important for, you know, folks to understand exactly what the financials will look like here, and our borrowing options and all of that. And then your question in regards to the poll applications. So the poll applications, they're just time sensitive because they take about two years to go through. So getting them in as quickly as possible is, you know, is just of the utmost importance. And the, you know, the idea with fibers, with this fiber offering, is that every home will be connected to, will have the option to be connected to fiber. So even if folks, you know, are getting underground utilities, you know, they're going to be running fiber with those utilities to get to those places. So no new polls are going to be put up or anything, it's just going to be running with existing utilities. And then in, you know, in terms of repairs, I think this is also another place where partnering with a neighbor is so advantageous. Because when something happens, you know, FiberSpring is going to be coming down from South Hadley to make those repairs, they're going to be offering technical support and repairs. And then the lead technician at FiberSpring is actually somebody who worked for Comcast in Long Meadow for about 10 or 15 years. So when you talk to him, he's somebody that knows every street in Long Meadow like the back of his hand. And this is just another advantage of working with someone, you know, with a community partner that knows us well and will be able to, you know, provide the service that we need. And I think, you know, folks in Long Meadow are going to be, you know, very pleased with this. And we'll see the difference between that versus, you know, working or receiving the service from a private company.
Couple of things that, number one, there's two documents that are prepared for you. One is the document that's attached, the other one is the FAQ. Intentionally, we split the recommendation to the board and the meeting with FiberSpring to be a month out, to give you folks time to consider rather than just saying, hey, here it is, and do it all in one night. So you've got a month to kind of start reading, getting up to speed. Mark asked a question about, is Comcast just going to die and roll over? No, they will come out with lower-priced options. But the fact of the matter is, they're pricing a lower-priced option over coaxial cable versus a fiber. I'll leave that to Ben to explain, Ben and Ben to explain the differences there, where we're talking apples and oranges, it really is. And then we do have, I think there's a way to get some historic rates from the towns who have done this already, and what their take rates were, as well as the ones that are going forward, including, you know, Wilbraham, which has been very, I guess, you know, willing to share information and data back and forth.
Thank you.
Great. Dan?
Thanks. Just a couple of things, but first I wanted to echo, you know, what Mark said too. I mean, what you did for this, the community and just the service. I mean, you guys put in countless hours, a lot of, several meetings, several opinions, really looked at this, you know, very thorough. And, you know, Venite as well, I just want to commend you on really taking this, you know, head-on, right when you, right when you got on the board. And this was something that came up when I was running as well, and right when you got on, you know, I know you were eager to hit the ground running and make a positive impact. And especially in a town like Long Meadow, when we have conversations all the time about how can we, how can we generate additional revenue? But also, this is a way, not only are we gaining additional revenue in the future, but we're also helping a lot of the folks that are working remotely from home as well with this transition over the past, you know, five years or so with the thing called COVID. So I think this is a great project. Venite, I commend you for leading this, the committee for all the work that you've done. And just looking at everyone's resume too, it's really impressive to have everyone, you know, come together and serve. So I really, I appreciate everyone's effort and input on this. Secondly, I love the word fiber hoods. I thought that was kind of, made me laugh when I was reading that. So one of the questions I, excuse me, one of the questions I had there, so is this, is it like a community within Long Meadow? You have different neighborhoods where everyone raises their hand, yes, I want to, I want to get involved, and I want, I want fiber, versus, I guess I'm bringing it up because I'm just concerned about some, maybe some parts of town that maybe there's elderly folks in this area and they might not know to, you know, they're not maybe as in tuned in terms of having the same access that we might have, being the younger generation. And I just want to make sure that they're not left out, you know, with the fiber hoods.
So the goal of the fiber hoods is to choose which neighborhoods get done first, rather than being arbitrary and just choosing a section of town. But the, the overall goal of the project would be to hit every single residence in the town. It just may take, you know, instead of year one, six months in, it's year three, two months in.
And this has been like a positive, based on some of the rollouts?
Yeah, so both Whip City and FiberSpring do it this way. They think it's the easiest way. West Springfield's fiber hood, or whatever they're calling it, was overwhelmed in its first day, and they were able to pick three sets right away. I think when we talked to Whip City, you know, their MLP board member said that he tried his hardest for his neighborhood to be the first fiber hood, and even he lost. And it just made, they think it makes it fair, where the private industry would choose the north section of town and work their way across, even though it may not make sense.
So what you're saying is Venite's neighborhood is going to be first?
Well, it depends on his neighbors.
Exactly. That's the thing. And it does two things. Besides giving public opinion, it also helps to fund the rest of the bill. The more, you've got 100 neighbors in a fiber hood that are willing to sign up versus only 50 in another one, you're actually going to generate more revenue with the fiber hood that has 100 people.
Yeah, that just raises a point. Long Meadow's a pretty small geographic town, nine square miles compared to even South Hadley or someplace else. Do they do these fiber hoods by area, or area, or do they say, we're going to split every town into five sections or 10, you know, so if you're twice the size, you still get 10 sections as a, as a town?
I think Whip City showed us a map, I think, but of how they would do it. But I think they choose groupings of residences. So, you know, a thousand residences as a fiber hood or something.
So we're 5,400 residents, give or take. So you're saying maybe there's 2,000 or maybe 500 houses in a residence? Okay, but, but it's not going to be, the size of the town doesn't make the difference. It's their capability to say, we can connect in this number of houses at once, and so we're going to do it in groups of, say, 80, or groups of 100, or whatever they decide.
And I think they've even said to us that we probably will have to do multiple fiber hoods at a time. We won't be able to just do one and then do the next and the next. We'll have, we'll have to do multiple.
And obviously, right, there's only one outlying area, and that's the, down by the river, that has the least density. But everything else is rather dense, rather flat, easy to construct. We're also looking, proposing to look at what the whole thing underground would look like, what the cost is. Maybe it's worth it, maybe it's not, but that's what we still have to find out.
Okay, and last question I have is, the town owns a fiber backbone. Will this build off of the town's fiber backbone, or just put in a whole new system?
It would go on top of it. I think they said they could look at interconnecting it wherever it exists, but they need more, more fiber than what is already there, basically.
I thought fiber had like unlimited capacity, you know?
So they, so each, each fiber hood or each neighborhood will get its own dedicated line back to a building somewhere in town that is the sort of driver? And then when they get to the neighborhood, they take a big passive splitter and they split it into 16 homes. So there may be, you know, there may be 32 strands of fiber that go to that box that get split out 16 times, each 16 times 32.
We're getting very close to series of tubes.
We're also very fortunate, we don't have a lot of multi-dwelling units. I mean, there is the JCC facility, there's a few others, but for the most part, we're single-family homes.
That's been the downfall of all of, of all of these companies, is getting into the multi-dwelling units.
Yeah, where you got to go into an apartment.
I just want to, I talked about Josh's question about the cutting the cord and the cable boxes and stuff. Benjamin Tansky, 130 Crespi Circle. If you look at your Comcast or your Xfinity remote now, and you go on your TV, everything is IP-based. Your cable box is actually using the internet. So you want to see replays of the football game, you're going online, it's all IP-based. So it's a lot about education, and that's what the task force is going to really help as well, educating the community.
I think my question was more, and I think it's been answered, but if, if we got a 60% up take rate, and then would Comcast say, you know, we're only going to offer basic internet, or we're not going to do cable in Long Meadow anymore, for people who did choose to use it? But I, the question's been answered. But, yeah, I was kind of, I was an old-school TiVo guy, and I was kind of shocked when my internet went down, I couldn't watch it anymore. I said, hey, that doesn't seem fair. Yeah, so I could use that information like five years ago.
Noted.
And, and circling back, oh, sorry, Josh.
And I just wanted to say, before I shut up for the night on this, thank you all. We really appreciate it. You guys worked hard on this. I thought that this was a fantastic recommendation. I was really excited to read it. And this could really change the fate of Long Meadow. It could really do a lot for this town. So thank you for your work, I appreciate it.
Thank you, it's the beginning is what we call it, right? There's a lot more to go after this.
Thank you, yeah. And just one point, I was going to circle back to Dan asked about, making sure that folks that might otherwise miss this opportunity, maybe senior citizens, other folks, that they are, you know, brought into the loop. FiberSpring has obviously already, you know, tackled this issue in South Hadley, and they do different types of, they employ different strategies, like they, you know, will set up at the senior center, or they will set up at the library, or do different events just to answer questions and reach out to folks that might not hear about this otherwise. Because, you know, obviously for this to work as well as it should, it's in everyone's best interest for the take rate to be as high as it can. So, you know, that are considerations, you know, those are considerations that, you know, they've already thought about and, you know, I think are excited. that, you know, they've already thought about and, you know, I think are excited to do here in Long Meadow. All right. Any other questions? All right. Well, as you guys can see, I've been pretty lucky to work with folks as smart and as talented as these folks on the task force. So all of you, thank you for joining tonight. Thank you for helping with this presentation. And, and, you know, we'll see you hopefully back on September 3rd with Fiber Springs presented as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Okay. So we can move on now to the quarterly investment report. Do we have Erica to talk about this?
Yes, I'm moving her and his panelists now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi Erica, thank you for joining us.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Awesome. So we'll start off with the quarterly investment report. If you want to go through that?
Sure. So I'm here tonight submitting my quarterly report on the status of the town's cash and investments for the period ending June 30th, 2024. As per the investment policy, the town held no long-term investments that exceeded the five-year limit. The individual bank balances were under the $20 million bank provision. All banks received the highest safety rating of green from Verivane and all accounts are fully insured and secured. The final quarter of fiscal year 2024 has seen very stable interest rates with the only notable increase at Monson Savings Bank. I reached out to Monson Savings Bank and specifically asked them if we could see if we could get an increase on our trust funds that hold their scholarships and trust funds for the town. And they were able to increase this from 1% to 2%. The assistant treasurer are constantly closely monitoring interest rates and moving funds to the appropriate accounts to optimize investments with faster returns. We were also notified recently from Peoples Bank that they are being required to exit DIF as a result of their growth beyond the DIF aggregate deposit limit. DIF has ensured us that they will continue to cover all balances as of January 31st for an additional year. So as of Janu-, sorry, July 31st, they made sure that our balance was just below 20,000, which is our limit, sorry, 20 million, which is just below our maximum limit. So ensure that no matter what we have in there for funds that follow the policy, we will be insured for the year. And I already have reached out to our representative at Peoples Bank and we are working to set up a meeting to figure out what our options will be and what the best will be for the town. The OPEC pension reserve investment fund experienced a gain in quarterly interest. The quarter ended with a net increase of approximately $112,000 and the balance as of June 34th, June 30th, sorry, is approximately $8 million. The treasurer's office continues to seek the best possible interest rate and diversify funds appropriately to maximize investment potential while being in compliance with Massachusetts state laws and regulations. We will also continue to closely monitor all accounts and ensure the safety and security of all of our investments.
Great. Thank you so much. Any questions from the board for Erica?
No questions. Just that if a phone call got us initial 1% at Monson, we should call them a lot more. Thank you, Erica.
All right. Any, anything else? All right. And then Erica, are you also here to talk about the ban approval?
I am, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. So for the ban approval on August 7th, I think Ian's here too. So Ian, don't say that he doesn't in here, but on August 7th, we went out to bid for an $840,000 ban. The ban is for 360 days and covers two authorizations. The first authorization is 800,000 new borrowing on the middle school feasibility study and 40,000 is a renewal on the water main drawings. The town received six bids on the total $840,000 ban and the bids range from 4% to 5.10%. We want to go with the lowest bid, which is Oppenheimer and Company with a rate of 4%. If you take the NIC or the net interest costs of 3.922 after the premium, 655 is applied, brings us down a little bit. So it's a way for different companies to take advantage by offering a premium. And I have attached the bid sheet. You can see all the different bids. But it is my recommendation as well as that of Ian, the town finance director, to award the bid as outlined in the vote below. I won't read the big, I know you have to anyway, but if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Great, thank you. Ian, anything to add?
Just for additional context with this, if we go back to fall of '22, so this, this originally came from the personal team meeting, Article 1 of October 25th, 2022, which the town donated to appropriate 1.6 million to use towards the Longwood Middle School Building Committee. Now, the 800,000 that we are redoing towards this feasibility study is half. The other half is funded through free cash and half of it will be funded through a borrowing authorization. This is that such authorization.
Great, thank you. Anything from the board?
Yeah. Yeah, I have, I have a question. One is the, the $800,000 for the middle school, do we anticipate continuing to roll this over as bans until such time as we bond the school and then pay for it as bonds? Or are we going to just pay for the bans out of operating revenue? And that's, I guess we'll start with that question. I have another one after that.
So the fine situation is we have $400,000 appropriated within the budget for short-term debt for 2025. And then we have another $400,000 anticipated in FY26 to pay for the full ban. So the rationale right now is to keep the 400,000 rolling to use towards this project and then potential future projects.
I apologize, but I'm not sure. So when this ban expires or is up, we're going to take out another ban for the 800,000 or only for 400,000?
So no, the, we, the ban was funded in 2026 or 2025 fiscal year 2026. So we will have a sort of timing difference where there will be 400,000 incurred from FY25 to pay for this $800,000 ban. So with that being said, I'm sorry?
So we would, we would renew half of it. We would renew the 400,000 to get us to fiscal year 26. So yes, Mark, you would, we would pay off 400,000 next year and then only renew 400,000, 400,000 the following year. And then it would be completely paid off the full 800,000 in two years.
Okay. So, so we're going to pay for $400,000 out of this, out of the operating budget in 2025. Have 400,000 left and somehow we'll roll that over, figure it out at that time.
Yeah, it'll be another ban likely because of they're so much cheaper than actually going out to bond. You wouldn't want to bond 400,000 if it's not the full project yet.
Correct. I get that. The other thing is the, the $40,000 is for water projects. I was under the impression that we already had supplemental money that we had bonded for water projects. And so I was wondering why we were banning, take borrowing another $40,000 through this ban rather than using some available money that we had actually bonded for this water project?
So originally, the ban that was due August 2020, 24 included $60,000 for the Long Meadow water main drives. So this is just renewing that bond that fans paid off over the one-year period that still remains. There's only 30,000 that remains after the principal payment is made into fiscal year 25.
Right. I get that, Ian. But we're paying 4% on that 40, $40,000. So give or take that's, you know, that's, I don't know, 1,600 bucks or something like that. We can save the town $1,600 just by using the money we already have that we borrowed for water projects and not ban this, not roll this ban over, just pay it off. I would think.
So if you don't mind me jumping in, I don't have the chart in front of me. I'm sorry. I thought I printed out, but I believe the goal was to gradually pay off the ban so that when some of the debt fell off, I believe it's fiscal year 26, it would be more of an even keel with the borrowing. So we were gradually having some fall off. I believe that was the goal, was to just kind of spread it out over the years until fiscal year 26.
Because that would be when the middle school potentially would be bonded for?
Yeah. I'd move from the 800,000 for the middle school. I'm now looking at the $40,000 portion of this bond anticipation note that's going to be used for water department drawings. That, the ban that has $40,000 left for water department drawings, we could pay that off out of funds, I assume. Water is water. The water department's the water department. Pay it off out of money we already have and, and that we've already borrowed and stop paying for, you know, unless there's a, you know, gee, this is only 4% interest and we're, you know, we're paying far, far more than that on the other money or less or whatever, you know, unless there's an arbitrage reason to do that. It seemed to me borrow less than, if we've already got that $40,000 borrowed.
So Mark, my question to you then is, are you not looking to move forward with this ban and you're looking to have us go back to our financial advisors and reissue?
Well, I mean, when you put it that way, I mean, the answer may be yes, because why are we borrowing $40,000 if we already have the $40,000 that we can pay for, that we borrowed previously as part of water department projects? Shouldn't we not have gone out for a ban? You know, I totally understand and accept and agree with, with the town authorized us to do, borrow $800,000 for the middle school feasibility study, pay the other $800,000 out of retained earnings or free cash, I'm sorry, out of free cash. That's fine. My only question was, what were we going to do at the termination of this ban? And you answered that. The other portion of this, this bond anticipation note is $40,000 for water drawings. You know, I thought that we had money and last we looked, we still had some supplemental money that we had borrowed for water projects that we could pay to do this. That's all I'm, I'm asking. Why did we not do that? It's, it's, you know, it just seems like, you know, if you got $40,000 in cash on hand, why go out and borrow another $40,000 to roll over a ban?
Ian and Erica, do we have time on this to wait until September 3rd? Or is this time sensitive?
I'm sure the ban expires. It's got to be rolled over.
So the ban expires on the 20th. I don't honestly know what else. Talking to our financial advisor, if it could wait. I, the best I can answer that is that I believe the, the plan behind it was once that 60,000 for the water mains was part of the ban, we either have to pay it off or you can renew it. You can't take a year off, so to say, and then renew it later. So I think it was planned to renew it so that the water rates would be consistent and you weren't seeing a huge hike. I'm not sure. It's hard. I wasn't part of this conversation. So I don't know where the, the methods were for using this money rather than something from a different fund. I can't speak to that. So I apologize.
Mark, in my discussions with Paul, my understanding with the short-term debt arrangement is that given the town, the ability to keep a certain amount appropriate for short-term debt gives us the flexibility in order to do smaller projects with bands in the future. If we were to decrease the short-term debt capacity, that would remove the ability for us to take on such bands in the future.
And then you wouldn't be able to borrow for this piece again. Yes, I believe that's correct. If you don't continue to borrow this, you can't come back after and borrow again for it.
Frankly, I don't understand, follow that, but I guess I don't need to, you know, necessarily, you know, a bond anticipation note, and I may be wrong about this, but my understanding is it's a way for us to borrow money at a lower rate rather than all the costs involved with issuing a true bond, a 10-year bond, a 20-year bond, whatever. Bond anticipation note has a lot less paperwork and a whole lot less cost to the town. So we go out for bands and, and for a long time, and it may even be now, the interest rates you pay on bands had been much lower than the interest rate you pay on bonds. So not only was it, you know, operationally easier, but it was also financially more desirable for the longest time. And we used to take bond anticipation notes and take them out for six months and then just roll them and roll them and roll them until we, we finally paid them off. So I, I don't, I'm not opposed to the use of bond anticipation notes. I think they're appropriate when they're appropriate. But we're borrowing money for a use when we have money already in the bank that we previously borrowed. And we, and for borrowing this money, what we're doing with the $40,000 at least, is paying off the old bond anticipation note, right? Because it's still there, essentially rolling it over. The $800,000 is new, it's new middle school, you know, feasibility study. But we're borrowing money to roll over a bond anticipation note. You know, I'm not going to run this into the ground. I just think it's not my, my decision of how I would financially run the town. The 4% on $40,000 is $1,600 a year. It's not going to make or break this budget, but it's $1,600.
I do have a little clarification. I, I think this might answer it, but I'm not sure because I'm trying to catch up as well. The drawings do not have the same term that all of the other borrowing we did for the L project does. So that's why we need a ban as opposed to using the L project proceeds, or I shouldn't say proceeds, but if that's what you were getting at, using the L project borrowing that we did, we can't. That borrowing was for 25-year lifespan or whatever it is, and the drawings don't have that same lifespan. So it's not eligible. It's not an eligible use.
All right. Thank you.
I just, what's, what's hanging me up here is we're talking about a renewal of the 40,000 to keep our short-term borrowing capacity. But this, is this 40,000 a new, this is a new loan, correct? Our new, it's being added to the note or is it renewed? So it's from last year?
It's a renewal.
It's a renewal.
It's a renewal.
Okay. I think between that and Len's answer, I, I feel comfortable with, and given the time limit we have on the rest, because the ban is for 840,000. It's not for 800 and then 40, right?
Right. It's one ban.
So I think we, given, given our timing and the fact that it is small, I, I think we should go forward. I agree with Mark that it would have been at least nice to have the information coming in because it does, it jumped out at me as well as why are we, why are we borrowing that?
I mean, wouldn't the financial advisor be privy to this and provide some direction or, or not at all?
Uni, UniBank's job is to loan money. The more they loan, the better, the more their take is. So I'm not, I'm not convinced I would rely on UniBank, Ian, although one would like to think they would advise us on it, but who knows?
Yeah. I guess that was more of a question for Erica and Ian. When you go to our financial advisors, I mean, aren't they giving, trying to give us advice around what we, what we might be missing out on or making the best decision? So I'm just curious how those conversations go when you reach out to them.
We meet with them to discuss what our upcoming capital projects are and they rank recommendations based on what they feel either is advantageous for the town or what's available. Because depending on the type of capital project, it would, it would not be recommended to do a bond if it's small or depending on the timeframe of when we need to do the project, we might do a bond or a ban.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. I mean, I agree. Good questions. I think, you know, responses provided by Erica and Len really helped clarify. Do we have a motion for any further discussion of this?
I'll move that we, I'll move that we approve.
Oh, sorry. There is a vote that is in the memo that I submitted. It just has to be pretty precise for the borrowing, if you wouldn't mind us reading that.
Yeah, thank you. I move to award to Oppenheimer and Company a 360-day, $840,000 bond, $840,000 bond anticipation note. and forty thousand bond, eight hundred and forty thousand dollar bond anticipation note at a rate of four percent with a premium of six hundred and fifty-five dollars for an NIC of three point nine two two zero percent.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Mike?
Mr. Hamavati?
Yes.
Mr. Zrko?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you, Erica and Ian, appreciate you guys standing on and chatting with us about this. Thank you. All right, thanks, have a good day. All right. Now we're going to move over to the Fall Special Town Meeting Look Ahead and a couple of zoning bylaw change proposals. So there's a memo and there's also another zoning bylaw change draft. The first zoning bylaw change draft on the agenda is in reference to three point one five to three point one seven, which relates to commercial vehicles. Josh, do you want to take the lead on talking about this one?
Sure. So this is something that I know is a topic of conversation that a lot of people in town have had, have had for years, and it's a hot topic. I've seen at planning board meetings in a lot of towns. So my, my goal here is to get the town to consider whether we want to change our commercial parking rules right now, that we have in place right now. And generally to be more, much more permissive of commercial vehicles parked in residential zones and parked in driveways. And I give you three, I've been thinking about this for a long time, I'll give you three reasons why I, it's at the forefront of my mind now, why I wanted to bring it forward. I think that Long Meadow, there's, has a changing makeup of who lives here. And maybe at one point it was all doctors and lawyers, but now there's a lot of folks who are tradesmen or have businesses that they may run out of their house. And we're not, we're not a bedroom community anymore, or maybe we're a different kind of bedroom community. But I think that it would be, it's more indicative of who we are if we do allow people to bring their work vehicles home if they need to. The Long Range Report that we just voted in on last year, or this year, recommended this change or changes like this specifically for equity purposes. And there are, if you read the report, it gives some reasons why this would be a good change. Generally, it is good for the town to have, to make these changes to allow more people to come into town and to change the base of who is able to move here. Because you can, you can make a lot of money as a tradesman, you might be improving your house. There's a lot of reasons why it makes sense to allow this. And then a third one, and a big one that I talked to Lynn about, our code enforcement officers spend an inordinate amount of time on commercial parking, fielding complaints or arguing with people about whether they can park their vehicles. I recently heard from a resident, who I think is now a former resident, who left town because of they couldn't park their vehicles. And they had tried different, a few different solutions, and short of building a garage on their property, they couldn't afford to live in town anymore. Or to have, or it would be very inconvenient to have their work vehicle parked somewhere else in, outside of town. So, and this is mostly my thoughts with some input from Lynn, Corinne and Veneth. So, and I say that not to damn them, but to damn myself. This is, I want this to be, to start the conversation, I, there's, I already think of, since I put these changes on, I already thought of a change. But I would like input from the other members, I would like input from the planning board, and so hope we can vote to suggest this to the planning board tonight based on, and I can explain why. And from residents who are watching, who are, who, I want to give input on this. I know that this is a hot topic, and I've heard, I've talked to people about it, and I've heard for and against, and I'm curious to hear what other people think, and I hope we can consider it. And the nice thing about our town is ultimately the townspeople decide at a town meeting. So the five of us could be totally for this, totally against it, but if we can put it to the town, we can hear voices and see what happens. So Mike, if you want to go up to the top?
Yep.
So this is the zoning bylaw. There was one change that needed to be made regardless, I think, and Corinne pointed it out to me. But so this is, like all zoning bylaws, it works a lot in double negatives. So this, it states that in residence zones, no building shall be used or erected which intended to be used for any purpose except one or more of the following. So basically, you can have a detached, permanent, single-family dwelling, together with an attached garage, housing not more than three automobiles, and this is the part that should be changed anyway, all of which shall be of a non-commercial passenger type. So this was not enforced, I think. So this said you could have a non-commercial vehicle in your garage. That's not what it said. It said you couldn't even have it in your garage. That was not enforced, obviously. So I think, no matter what we do, that should be taken off. If we go down to then A, B, or A1B, so this, you could have a parking space in a garage as long, or you could rent out a parking space in your garage as long as you are not required to, that space is not required to allow no more than, or to have all the vehicles parked in the premises and not on the street. So that is a very confusing worded one. I think I tried to fix it, but this basically says you can't park in your driveway. And like in my house, I technically have a two-car garage, but you could never fit two cars in there. So I've, my car's in my driveway, technically I would have been in violation of this, if I, well, if I was renting. And then here's the big one that I think we should add, and this is one of the ones I would like to discuss and I already would like to change on. So I am saying that you can have, you can park no more than two registered commercial vehicles related to a business owned by or employing a resident of the premises as limited by A5, which is down below. Commercial vehicles that weigh more than ten thousand pounds must be parked to the rear of the street setback line. And you can see from my edits, and I think that might be me and Corinne editing, going back and forth on that a little bit. My first question to my fellow board members are, would we, is too, too many for how many commercial vehicles you could have on your lot? And I also think that, and Mike, if you want to pull up that website I sent you. I initially put ten thousand pounds as, which is a class of truck. I thought, what it says now is if you have a truck over ten thousand pounds, which is really a class of truck, that you would have to park it behind the street setback line, which is forty feet behind the street. And that setback line is where, in a lot of town, that's where the front of your house would be, because you cannot build your house in front of the street setback line. So basically, I was saying, for most of the town, you cannot have a ten thousand pound or higher truck parked in front of your house. I actually think it should be six thousand pounds, and that is basically because of, you can see on this, the cargo van and the step van, I think are pretty big. And the reason I did that is because I would not want people backing out of their driveway, and I'm, I have to admit, I'm mostly thinking of my driveway. If my neighbor had a step van or a cargo van in their driveway closer to the street, I would not be able to see cars coming the other way. So that is really, for me, that is a safety issue. But I, I, so I think that that would be a good change to make, just on what I edited. The one or two trucks would be something I would be interested on, vehicles would be something I'd be interested on input on. And Mike, if you want to go back to the other page, go to the next page on that, down to seven A. Oh, and by the way, that, where I said the limited by A5, that means that it must be parked on a paved portion or a gravelled portion, which is an existing bylaw. And then if we go to the seven A, this is part of where it was inconsistent, so I propose that we strike that a private garage must be used for overnight vehicular storage of commercial vehicles, which includes vans and pickup trucks used in connection with the business. And then my final suggestion is actually in the general bylaws, it's a parking bylaw. Mike, if you would go all the way down to the bottom of this document?
Oh, it's not registered.
Oh.
Hold on one second. Yeah, it's been disconnecting.
I propose deleting the general bylaw, that a person shall not park a vehicle that is used for commercial purposes on a public way for more than one hour. This section is not applied to a vehicle during the time that the person is using the vehicle, is running or serviced to a household or business establishment, or during the time that the vehicle is being used for pickup from or delivery to a household or business establishment. And this, Corinne informed me, this is not enforced. So this is, just on a similar vein, if somebody has a, a commercial vehicle that they park on their property during the day, they could park it on the street, much like I do with my car if I need to let my wife out, so we can get back in and in, in and out of our small driveway. So that is, that's generally the changes I propose. I would like input from the planning board, and I would like them to have a public hearing on this. And in order to do that, according to Corinne, we would want to vote on, to send this to the planning board tonight, so they could start their discussion in September and have, and continue in October if necessary, and hold the public hearing in November before the town meeting. So I've talked long enough.
Well, thank you, Josh, for all your work on this, for thoughtfulness on this. I mean, I agree that this is also something that I've heard about over and over again, and you, you know, having had this experience of hearing about it, and then also disappearing in the long-range plan, this was just a good time, I think, for us to have this discussion. So thanks for bringing this forward. Do we have, and I am in support of voting for this, to be sent over to the planning board for them to begin their process? Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or?
Yeah, Mark's up.
Mark's up. Yeah, I've got some questions. First, first of all, Josh, thanks for going through this. I just want to make sure everybody's aware that something that tried to do the same thing, it's not this, was brought before the town meeting twice in the last probably four or five years and failed. So I don't know if anybody's aware of it, but there was a change to our commercial parking regulations. So your comment, we can do what we want to do, but town media's going to do what they want to do, may be very, very appropriate, but people need to understand that was changed. The couple of things that you asked about change to one versus two vehicles, I would favor one. Six thousand versus ten thousand for the same reasons you suggested six thousand, I would favor six thousand pound vehicles. The two other things I want to say is, first of all, the people who have come before the select board over the years complaining, don't complain over the station wagon that says, you know, something on the side of it. They complain about the pickup truck with the garbage in the back that's parked there constantly. So it's not just the vehicles, I won't say it's not at all the vehicles, it's to some degree, but it's frequently the, the sense that my, my neighbor's running a, you know, keeping trash in their, in their pickup truck, and that's what's opposing, they oppose. And this doesn't address, and I don't know that it can address, you know, what's piled over the, and I, you know, if you want to come to me and I'll name names and location, but that to me is more important than, you know, the clean pickup truck or the clean van or whatever, you know. I've got some in my neighborhood, and frankly, it doesn't bother me and it doesn't bother the neighbors, but I know there are a couple of neighbors where the condition of the vehicle is terrible and this helps them enforce it. The second thing I was, and I don't know how to address it, but I think we need to if we want to try to get this passed. The second thing that I would say is, you know, your comment, Josh, that this parking, it's not enforced. I'm really concerned about, well, we don't enforce the bylaws, so let's change them. For example, you know, we don't enforce keeping your sidewalks clear, we don't, you know, if we have bylaws, people put them on the books for a reason. We voted for them for a reason. We employ people to support the bylaws, and if they can't support the bylaws for whatever reason, let's look at it. You're right, we're right. If they make no sense, get rid of them. But don't get rid of them simply because we don't want to enforce them, it's annoying, it pits neighbor against neighbor. If it's a bylaw, it's a bylaw, we ought to enforce it.
Just to clarify on that one, Mark. I sent this sheet out and said, I think this should be taken out, and then Corinne said, yeah, and it's not enforced. So it went the other way.
Right, okay. But yet, I don't want to perceive that we're changing these bylaws because we have trouble enforcing them. If we're going to change the bylaws, we should change them because it's accommodating for people who drive commercial vehicles, who drive vans, who take, you know, who work for a company and they take the truck, whatever it is. But I think we need to be very sensitive to the vehicles that are left in the driveway, you know. You know, you know, Mr. Fox will be in here tomorrow to tell us about his neighbor who's, he claimed was overflowing his trucks with stuff in the driveway constantly, and it was an eyesore in the neighborhood. And, and so I think we need to address that if we have a hope of getting this to pass. And I don't know how to. And therefore, from my perspective, that's probably why town residents voted not to change it, because they knew that once this was in place, they couldn't control the quality of those vehicles. And, and, and there were enough examples of that issue that they didn't want that to happen. That's my opinion, but I don't know that.
Veneth?
Yeah, go ahead.
Josh, thank you for bringing this up, appreciate it. So Josh mentioned this was, so this was an item that was on the long-range planning that I sat on for, you know, I don't know, a year and a half or so. So we, we looked at, we looked at the long-range plan, a couple of things, you know, one being we felt that this was a document in the, in the past that just kind of collected dust, you know, we never really, you know, did much with it in, in the future years. I think when we had the presentation, one of the things that we tried to commit to as a board was to make sure that we actually implemented some of the, the items that came out of the long-range plan. And I can tell you, I was in several of these meetings where this was a topic that came up, all, all bylaws really, that have been controversial. But we also looked at the long-range plan with the lens of a couple of items, one being climate resiliency as well as DEI. And I think that this would be, as Josh said, the town has changed a lot from, you know, certainly, when I grew up in town in nineteen ninety, I think this is an opportunity for, for the board to, to take a look at bylaws like this that Josh has done, and it gives us the opportunity to, to try to make a positive change and make sure that Long Meadow is seen and viewed as a town that has, that is more inclusive for all different people and all different backgrounds of work that they might have. Like Josh mentioned before, viewing Long Meadow as just lawyers and doctors, that's, that's not the case. I mean, it's, it's changed over time, and that's a good thing. So I think this is something that I can appreciate Josh putting this forward and, you know, allowing us to have the conversation. I think ultimately, the residents should know that this is just a, you know, recommendation initially from the select board that will then go to the planning board, that will then come in front of the town. But I think we do all of these different committees and tasks force in town to come up with ways to get the public's input and actually implement positive change. I think this is just another result of trying to do that. Going back to Josh's point in terms of looking at some of the language, one of the items that I, that I noticed, and Josh, you're a lawyer, you probably know much better than I do, but with the recent news that came out with the governor and the ADUs... would that have any sort of impact to some of the language when we talk about single family dwelling, for example? Is that something we would want to address now or we wait until?
No, so that's, I, I have done limited research on that, but because I've gotten questions about it. I, I think that the short answer is not yet. And the long answer is I, I think that no, because we still, what if, my understanding of that, the legislation is you can put in ADUs subject to our bylaws. So I think we want to look at holistically, how is that going to fit in to all of our bylaws? It wouldn't, you can still do that. We might, if anything, we would add on that you could put a dwelling unit behind because you want to be able to control how that's used. But I don't think it would affect this now. It's a good question.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, I mean, that's just my, my comments, but I do appreciate it, bringing it forward.
Hi, also. Yeah, thanks. I mean, I certainly personally welcome townwide conversation about this important issue. Thank you, Josh, for bringing it up. I think I'd love to see and learn more about how people feel about it in town. I think that when we try to change bylaws, what, what happens is there are sometimes unintended consequences. Like you don't really know what might, you can't plan for every possible scenario. And it might be on a very, very micro level in a neighborhood between two neighbors, for example. It makes it easier or harder to settle disputes. We want to minimize disputes, but I think that, and anything we can do to do that would be, would be good. But I certainly would be supportive of having a planning board consideration and a public hearing about this. So we can all learn more about where people stand and the pros and the cons.
And I want to say too, I do also think, Josh, you're right here on moving that limit down to 6,000. So I also agree with that. Just wanted to mention that as well. And Josh, were you going to say something?
Yeah, and I just wanted to address what Andrew said. Like, like I said at the beginning, I really, I don't know how this will go. I just thought it, and thank you for, I think you put it very well. This is a townwide conversation. I'm not standing from the rooftop saying this needs to change. I want to know if people want to change. I think, and that's, I've told many people, this came about because of that one conversation I had that somebody was moving town, moving out of town, which I didn't like to hear. But also people complain about this a lot and they say, well, you know, you can change the bylaw. And they say, yeah, well, so I said, you know what, I'll show, I'll show people. This is how you change the bylaw. Even if it doesn't get changed, maybe it'll come back and get tweaked later or it can get tweaked on the floor or however it comes about. But I think that this is something that people complain about a lot, they may not like. And this is how you do it. This is how it can be changed. Even if it's not, at this point, this is, this is an example of, I guess, the, the beauty of our weird form of government.
I suspect what will happen, which is probably a good thing, you know, the conversation will yield, this is a good starting point. But when we hear more and more about what people will think of frankly in their own personal experiences, what they've seen and what they are fearful of, they'll start making suggestions. And then this becomes a much longer document, which can be okay, you know, with more stipulations, more stringent guidelines, et cetera. And, and then you get to a bill or an amendment rather that might or might not pass based on that. And that's an exercise that's absolutely worth doing.
And that's why we send it to the planning board. They are, are stewards of the zoning bylaws and they have, they, they have, they have a lot of experience in looking at these things and have probably heard about this before, especially Bruce and Walter have been on the board for quite a long time. So I'm sure they'd have some valuable input. Yeah, so if we want to, I.
Josh, can I just ask, you know, is, is the timing of this for the special fall town meeting critical versus giving us the time it takes to bring it up at an annual town meeting, which generally has better attendance and more input? And, you know, I, I still go back to, and I know we've changed this a lot over the last couple of years. But, you know, it's called a special fall town meeting for a reason. It's got a lot different requirements than an annual town meeting. You know, in the past, we never put in bylaw changes at the special fall town meeting. It was kind of a cleanup of, of the finances and things like that. I, I don't know what it's going to take to put this through and get the kind of comments and commitments and
consensus.
Whatever you, you get from people, not to mention their, what they're going to tell you in here. But are we going to, are we starting to push that limit now for, for the fall?
Yeah, and that's, that's a good question. I guess in my time in town, there has been no difference in town meetings. And I know it's called the special and there's different requirements to get it on the warrant, et cetera. But it has not seemed different to me. And that was, I wasn't aware of the history. I mean, that, that does make sense. But I haven't noticed a difference in attendance, I haven't noticed anything different, really.
Is it a tooth that are vote as well?
For a bylaw change, yeah.
I would add that.
The biggest difference is what it takes to get something out of petition.
Really, 10 versus 50, right? Oh, 100, yeah.
I don't think this should be a topic that we, it would be beneficial to rush, for example.
No, no.
I, I think that it's not, if we, it was, it was in the spring, I think it would be fine. You know, I think that what, to be honest, what might very well happen is people literally on the floor of town meeting will suggest amendments, which they think will be beneficial to their personal circumstance. So I mean, you have to be prepared for all that things, all of those things. And the long, the more kind of, if the process is, is good and people are aware of it, you'll minimize those. I think if the hearings are done and then the news is out about it and people be aware of it, they won't be surprised. And you'll have a better chance of having, creating something that people would be in favor of.
Yeah, and, you know, and so that's a good point. I, I thought a lot about the process here and how I wanted to bring it about because I, I want as much input as possible. I want to, if this is something people feel passionate about, I want them to feel like they can give input. So if, if we, I still, we should send it to the planning board because this is their purview. I don't think we're going to get, the five of us are going to get any farther on this. So if we send it to them, if they, and I guess we can give it, let them be in the driver's seat a little bit. And if they think it's better for annual, you know, that, that's fine by me.
What if they want to not move forward with it?
Well, then at that point, I thought about that a lot too. And then I would either ask us to put it on the warrant or do it as a citizen petition.
Or consider what they say and the reasons why, right? Like, why wouldn't they? Well, maybe because from our experience, Josh, well, remember this from, you know, the guys that were mentioned have had decades of experience.
Yeah.
They may, we may learn something from them, so.
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's absolutely true.
Well, I think that they're, they're even now on sending this to the planning board, right?
Well, I, I think that, I'd like to hear, I, I think we should, we should definitely change the 10,000 pounds to 6,000 pounds.
I also feel like, as Mark said, one versus two, the one would be.
I think that's probably a better start if ever, if there's consensus.
Yeah, I mean, we can start with one and then see what, like the discussion that we've been talking about town will have over this can indicate whether that should be two or one, but yeah, starting at one sounds good to me.
Can you make those changes?
Yep. Josh, the other thing we hear, or I hear at least, is, you know, the, define a commercial vehicle. You know, and that's part of the issue. Doesn't mean it has commercial plate. We have a lot of people with pickup trucks that don't have commercial plates. And we have a lot of commercial plates on vehicles that are marginally commercial vehicles, you know. And, and so, you know, how do you define and should we define that? Or should we, does this eliminate that, the need for any of that definition and just say it's just any vehicle less than 6,000 pounds?
It is, so it is, it's already defined. And so when I say commercial vehicle is capital, that's referring to the, to the definition which I.
That was what was amended on the floor of the meeting. That was the last time anything related to commercial vehicles was brought up.
So I was on the planning board for this and because I love being a broken record, back then I said, why do we have this bylaw at all? And I, I thought that we, I ended up with a very tortured definition, which is a van or truck using connection with a business or trade or any vehicle which has commercial lettering thereon. So basically that does, is a commercial plate. And, which I know there, people have gotten warnings about commercial plates at least, right? So.
But this proposal defines commercial vehicle, that's.
Well, so this says, no, it doesn't. This uses commercial vehicle. So it says you can have a commercial vehicle, the parking of no more than a one commercial, registered commercial vehicle related to a business owner employed by a resident of the premises on paving or on gravel. And then it further specifies, commercial vehicles that weigh more than 6,000 pounds must be parked to the rear of the street setback line. So that is saying that commercial vehicles can be parked in the driveway. Larger commercial vehicles must be at least 40 feet back of the street.
Well, that's the same thing with a camper or something. People have to do that now. So I mean, that's not much of a change. It adds commercial vehicles, but people with boats and campers are supposed to be behind that setback line now.
And we, we all know that people are getting warnings or tickets for the zoning enforcement officer being able to see a commercial vehicle in the back. And that's one of the things I, I think that doesn't make sense to me, is not a good use of town resources and is not fair to residents.
Just one thing procedurally about the deferring to the planning board. There was mentioned before about whether or not can go, they can recommend to go forward to the warrant. But actually, if, if it's deferred to the planning board, they can make a recommendation to approve or recommend the article. But ultimately the select board sets the warrant, so you have the ability to change which meeting that it goes to.
Okay.
So they can vote to recommend the article and you have the ability to set the article whichever way.
When we make a referral, do we have to give them a timeline? Or do we just refer to them and then they, they take as long?
You can refer to them and make a recommendation that you would like it to come to the fall special time or that you would like it to go to the, or they may make a recommendation back saying, we would recommend that this goes to the annual time. But ultimately, my point was that you set the warrant, so you have the ability to.
Right, okay. Well, given that, I would move that we refer zoning change, bylaw change to 315-17 uses and residence zones and general bylaw 25913 to the planning board for consideration and public hearing. Did I miss a word there? Doesn't that make sense?
No, but the only thing that we have to clarify is I don't know if the general bylaw is under there.
Oh, no, that's us. Yeah, you're right. So, yeah, strike the general bylaw 25913.
Just a point of information, Josh. Given my concern about this issue of what's in the vehicle versus what's on, you know, just, does the planning board have the authority to change or are we saying here it is, it's either an up or down vote by the planning board and it goes to the, to the, to the town meeting either as it is? In other words.
Yeah, this is the weird thing that procedurally.
You were on the planning board.
Right? It's been a while.
No, no, the question is, you know, are we referring the concept to them with this suggestion? Are we referring this, this specific precise wording to them?
No, that, that's, it's a really good question. And my intention was to, for them to give input and make suggestions and how we want to do that.
So I think that's a different motion than referring this to the planning board. I think the motion is to, to recommend that the planning board take up the issue of commercial vehicles using this as a template or as a suggestion with the intent of putting, you know, moving something forward in such and such a timeframe.
So moved.
Yeah, no, I think that that, you're right. Because ideally in my head, this comes forth as here's what the select board and the planning board think is the best thing. However, that that reads on the warrant.
But if somebody stands up at their, one of their public meetings and has a great comment, you'd like to be able to incorporate.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
What if the motion were something like, refer to this planning board to consider this document and offer input and recommendations? Something like that, just to keep it open ended so they can.
Does that, is that.
It's not a yes or no on your document basically that you drafted.
All right, so I, I will withdraw my motion and I'll, I'll second Andrew's motion.
So I move that we refer this, refer this issue to the planning board with this document for their consideration and an invitation to offer input and/or recommendations.
I will second that.
Great, any further discussion? All right, Mike?
Mr. Hamavati?
Yes.
Mr. Swirko?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Great, and do we have Corinne on to talk about her memo?
No, she, she's not here. She's actually on vacation.
Yep. I'm happy to speak to you if you want.
Yeah, that'd be great, love, thank you.
So the, the memo pretty much details out what's being asked or what's at least being pointed out. The reason that this is coming before you tonight is so that we can give you ample time to consider it. We didn't want to just present you with a draft warrant and have you see this for the very first time. So similar to the commercial vehicle conversation, you know, as would be expected with the code enforcement officers being out and trying to decipher general and zoning bylaws, they're also bringing back to the office some inconsistencies or confusion. And so that's what you see here tonight is to try to rectify some of that. We also have noted some areas in the bylaws that don't specifically call out who is responsible for enforcement. So that's the very first revision you see suggested here under 215-6 for unnecessary noise. It's just cleaning up who is the enforcing authority. And then 215, oh, I'm sorry, two, yeah, 215-7. This is regarding light pollution. This has come up, actually, this was one of the first bylaw changes that had been talked about in a working bylaw group when I first got here. It came up in a conversation between zoning board, planning board, and the building inspector. At the time, we did not develop any language and bring something forward. So the issue has not gone away. And this is an attempt to try to respond to some of the complaints that have come in to the building department. And so you'll see that language here. And then revision to section 242. This had, we had given you a heads up about this a while ago and we elected to try to wait until after the election season. And so by the time this passes, or I'm being aspirational, if this were to go to town meeting and pass, it would be after the presidential election season. We were sensitive to not wanting to make changes to something that could be seen as controversial or with a ulterior motive. But that is not the case. And regarding the temporary signage, a town council has weighed in and has questioned whether or not it's, it's even enforceable. And then 25920 related to the tree belt, again, just adding enforcement authority. And then 25931 speaks to trees and shrubbery and just cleans up some language there. This was something that the tree warden had talked to you about previously and then now the language is here to show it to you. So there is nothing you need to do with this tonight, just to take it under advisement. Or if you have follow-up questions either tonight or leading up to our preparation of the draft warrant, reach out and let us know. But we just didn't want to surprise you with these in a draft warrant for the first time. And it also gives the public a chance to, to see this as well.
When, just beneath, if I could ask, the, the one thing that concerns me here is the glare. You know, my neighbor's post light shines in my bedroom when, you know, how, it, there's no definition of glare. There's no definition of what's too bright for one person and not bright. I just think that that opens all kinds of potential, now, doesn't mean it's, it's worse than where we are now. But without some kind of definition of, pardon me for saying this, lumens, which means we've got to walk around with a meter or, you know, light intensity or how in the world can we hope to enforce something about glare between, in neighborhoods? I, I just, I just think trying to define it is worse than leaving it the nebulous way that it is now. That's my personal opinion because I can imagine all the people, you know, this post light or this street light shines. street light shines in my, my kid's bedroom window. You know, what are we going to do? Start taking down streetlights and telling people they've got to take down post lights? And their bedroom window shines in my bedroom window when their shades are up.
I, I don't disagree with you at all. I'm not necessarily here to speak for or against it, just, we're bringing you something that's come up before. But I, I agree with everything you said, and I think-
But why would we propose a quote-unquote "light trespass ordinance" then? If it doesn't clarify what's, and I, I'm, I'm basing my comments on, we have an ill-defined issue that creates problems, okay? But if we don't clarify it by, by adding more to it, why add more to it? Leave it as, it's just going to go from one ill-defined system to another ill-defined system, in my opinion.
So it doesn't actually exist right now at all. So if you have a spotlight in your backyard that's in, to your neighbor's backyard, there is no, we don't get involved. It's not a town problem. And so that's, that's what the big change is here, is now there would be light trespass restrictions.
So no light from my property can, can spill over to my neighbor's property, because they could complain, and then you're going to tell me to put out that light?
Can I make a suggestion? So obviously, I think you have a good point. We don't want to do things that have these unintended consequences of creating bylaws based on subjective and, and not quantitative measurements. I know we've never had a bylaw about this in the past. Lynn, is it possible for you to just check with some other successful light pollution bylaws in other towns in Massachusetts, and see what stipulations they may have? Is there a metric that is quantifiable, rather than subjective? And then let us know. So some of these, I think we just need to look at some of these, some of these amendments are good, but others, you made a great point, and that's why they're showing to us now, I guess, so we can weigh in. Well said. Thanks.
Great. Anything else on this? No, okay, great. Thank you, Lynn. Let's move on. I think we've got the, we need to set the state primary election warrant. And so hopefully folks have had a chance to look at this. It's pretty standard, and we can, I guess, entertain a motion to, to sign this, approve it, and then get general signatures.
I'll move we approve the state, the warrant for the state primary election to be held September 3, 2024, 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Mike?
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Mr. Swirko?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Okay, great. Now I will entertain a motion to approve a one-day liquor license submitted by the Knights of Columbus Council, 5406 St. Mary's, for a, an event to be held on September 20th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Mike?
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Mr. Swirko?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Okay, great. And I will also entertain a motion to approve an Alakin Street party, a street block party application, request to close Alakin Street from Vermont to Laurel for a block party to be held on September 8, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. with a rain date of September 15.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, Mike?
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Mr. Swirko?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Right. And any comments about correspondence?
Beneath, I just had a question about the awful dog report that we got on Mr. Casotello. Do we need to take any action on that, or where's that currently?
Right, so because of that change that we made to the bylaw to allow me to-
It's being investigated?
It's being investigated. And it's actually a recommendation of the animal control officer to bring it forward to a hearing, which would likely be September 3 at our next meeting. So if I could also entertain a suggestion for that meeting, and I could talk with Beneath also at our agenda at any meeting. We're going to have quite a bit of business that night. I would suggest maybe starting the meeting a little bit earlier, because we're going to have school committee interviews, oh, excuse me, housing authority interviews, potentially another public hearing. So once we kind of nail down what the agenda looks like, it may be a suggestion that I run by Beneath to start the meeting a little bit earlier.
Yeah, I would prefer that, rather than getting out at 11.
Come on, it's only 10.
Yeah, right. It's early night, early summer meeting.
I thought I'd just make the suggestion, because we're going to have quite a bit of-
I'm with you, Mike.
Yeah, and we also have that joint meeting with Energy and State Building as well.
And fiber spring presentation also.
Yeah, we could start tomorrow.
That's good, but that's good stuff.
Do we, do we need to have fiber? I know we want to keep the momentum going. Do we, do we need fiber spring at that one? Is, I don't know how long that's going to be. Hey, you're the chair.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll pay the guy.
You're, you're the chair. You're the boss. Never mind.
Likely going to need an executive session at the end as well.
Oh, good.
So we're already starting.
The more we talk, the longer the meeting's getting. Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Mike?
Mr. Hamobathy?
Yes.
Mr. Swirko?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Take care, everyone. Have a good day.
Thank you.
See you.
Thanks, mate.
Thank you.